It's eight thirty, I'll call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anyone in the audience would like to schedule an item not listed? I don't see anybody raising their hand. We'll move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. Is there any agenda changes, first of all?
Yes, to our executive session, I need to add SDCL 125-23, consulting with legal counsel, and four, contract negotiations. Personnel and security will remain on there as well.
All right. Any other additions to the agenda? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion, any comments on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries for the agenda. Item five is the consent agendas. We have the approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments on any of the reports?
There was, on the human services report, we did hand out a report this morning that had the addition of item number nineteen dash one-five-eight. That was a change.
Good. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six is routine business, approval of the claims. We have claims payable, Trenton Township claim, and November Department of Revenue. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments on any of those claims? Any comments?
You would see under the Commission Department that we do have a couple of the culvert payments that came out as well, the one for Volga Township and the one for Trenton Township as well.
With those additions, is there any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. We'll start with the Highway Department, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a few things here. I apologize for not providing a report, but we're working on some of our project wrap-ups here before winter sets in. We're doing some mastic patching around some of our bridge ends and our culvert, where we have some issues of some sinkholes. Winter mowing is completed. We're working on snowplows, getting them mounted and sanders. We had most of that done prior to this, but now just looking over everything real good before it does set in. Graders also, we're getting them prepped. Salt, one of the issues that we had last snowstorm is with a lot of ice. We've provided snow or salt, sand to these smaller towns in the past, and we dang near depleted our inventory. So one of the things that I did do is I sent a letter out to these towns that if we are running low, that they wouldn't be available to get it from us until we could replenish our supply, but we have been working through that now that the weather's gotten a little nicer. The towns that do get us from us are Volga, Bruce, SDSU, Elkton, Aurora, and White. Like I said, I'm working with them as we're getting our inventory replenished to see if they can't stockpile a little bit because this last snowstorm, it took a lot of sand to get it, or salt and sand to get the ice peeled off the road in a timely manner. That's about all I got with that. We've gotten several loads of salt in now, so we've gotten our supply replenished. But with the harvest lagging and that, it's a little difficult to get the trucking done because that comes out of Kansas. So I've been looking at other alternatives, talking with other counties within the area to try to do, see if we could go outside of our contract to provide that. Looking at prices also, we looked at a twenty-three dollar a ton price. Twenty-two ninety-five compared to last year was up. So I've been talking with other counties also, since we don't use that much. These counties, they're paying around what we paid last year, so I'm looking at avenues to try to save us a little money on that also. The biggest issue that we got is getting the haul for the trucking company down to Kansas and then get us a backhaul back so we can try to get a little better price. But there again, I'm working on that. Like I said, our prices wouldn't, we don't spend over twenty-five thousand typically on salt and sand, but now with these entities like this last snowstorm, they dang near depleted, depleted our shed in one snowstorm. So I've sent letters out to them notifying them that there is all their alternatives. We ended up going to Sioux Falls to get a couple loads just to make sure if something did come in, we were kind of back to where I felt comfortable going into the next snowstorm, and now with a few loads that we have got in, we've got our shed back full. Hopefully the snow stays away. We're talking a little later this week, but we'll work through that when it comes. The bridges on seventy-seven, I know we had talked about this here at the last meeting with John, and one of the things they've noticed now, since they've closed down that completely on the south end of seventy-seven and twenty there, is they've got it closed off completely and while they're working, they got it so their crew can get in and out or any of the material they need. But then prior to them leaving at night, they put the signs back up on the road where they should be, and before they show back up in the morning, they're moved. And I know it was brought up about the fact that we couldn't see the signs down there, so we're working through on that. Talked with John yesterday. In regards to that, we're going to put up some blinking signs on the, or blinking lights on the signs to try to draw attention to that. But anything outside of what was originally proposed in the traffic control, I don't have this provided to you, but it's available on our website, is anything that we would ask for on top of what our original detour layout would be, a change order. And speaking with John, this project is very heavily signed. It's just the fact of maintaining the signs, which they've done, and I've witnessed it. It's just the fact of folks moving them off the road. And that's a concern to them also because they've got close to two to three million dollars worth of equipment sitting there, let alone their materials that they need to construct the bridge with, so. We're trying to work through that, but as they've been, as the river's been below flood stage, they've been out there nearly every day working. And the north pier that they've been working on all summer long, that is completed. It's out of the water now. They're removing Cofford Dam yesterday and re, or building a new one for the south pier as soon as they can get the north one removed. So, I mean, work's commencing. The tentative plan is to be able to pour that bridge deck in the middle of, or near the middle of January. So they're moving along quite well, but one of the things that John did want to bring up to you, there may be a request for change order if they do have to, depending on the weather, how much it's going to be as far as housing that to get that poured. So just so you guys are aware of that. But it's nice to see that they're moving along. They had a little spike in the river flood stage this here, this last week, but now it's on its way down, so they should be able to continue working. I know yesterday we got a little bit of rain, but it didn't seem to affect that much. It just seemed like it wanted to take the frost right out of the ground with that rain we got, so. There again, we've been with the rain, watching the roads. As far as mud being drug out on the field, we haven't gotten a whole lot of calls in the last couple of weeks due to the fact that the weather's been fairly decent, but we're keeping an eye on that.
Any questions?
I had sent the, asked Stacy to send the email from the citizen that had concerns about the road. And I'd be interested in knowing what the rest of you think, but I really, reading his letter, which mirrored how I felt about it at our last meeting, having that road, that turn, completely blocked off for the whole winter is a safety issue for the people in the south end of, around the Lake Campbell area. And if there is some way we can work around that, I really think we need to figure that out. And Brian, did I, you had sent out an email. I don't know if you just sent it to me or if you sent it to everybody.
Okay. And that was one of the things I did address with the contractor yesterday, and that's why I brought up the fact of them pouring that deck in January. Is their intentions is as soon as that reaches, you know, the level that they can cross that, their intention is to get their equipment and their supplies moved between the two bridges so they could open that back up and it be safe for traffic. And one of the things they had talked about doing was, you know, making sure they had a better barricade system with some lights on it when that does happen so we ain't having people trying to drive through those barricades.
And I think in the email you sent me, you proposed us putting up some kind of sign that was electronic?
Well, I had brought that up just for, you know, not only this project, but for future projects. You know, and that was one of the things that John brought up with the DOT. They have digital message boards. And they're reluctant to give them out the DOT is, but one of the things that I brought up to Leanne is, you know, maybe we need to look into purchasing a digital message board to warn these folks, or in the event when that road does come open, they know when it's open, or they know when it's going to be closed back up. You know, to try to, not everybody listens to the radio, not everybody watches the paper, but having a sign out there on the road might be advantageous to us as far as telling them when it's going to be closed or giving them warning when it's going to be opened, you know, for that.
When I was in Las Vegas for NACO, I went and seen the demonstration on those digital signs, and I think we should have a couple of those anyway because there's enough times when, and you don't need any electrical for those, right?
No, they're all self-contained.
And for this kind of thing, it would be really very helpful. And we wouldn't need a change order if we had a sign that sat there that flashed "Bridge out ahead", something like that, that people would see. And I understand people are moving the barricades and they're not supposed to be doing that, but we do know that they're doing that, and I think we have a liability issue if we don't do something to take care of that problem.
Leanne, you had talked about closing that off, and I think you were concerned before that people were using it and going to go off the bridge. Why, we closed it down now, so why is that a liability issue?
No, what I had said before is that we needed to sign it better because when it's pitch black outside, you don't know what's up ahead there, and people have moved the barricades. That's what I saw that night. The barricades were moved, I saw one barricade and it was sitting on the side of the road. It wasn't across any road. And because those are getting moved, I don't think it is a safety issue for people to make that turn there as long as the people that aren't familiar with the area that might come on that road know that the bridge is out if you go a little bit further north. And you, there's nothing at night when it's black that would let you know that if you weren't being pretty careful on how you're driving. But if there was some kind of signage there that was pretty obvious that said "Bridge is out ahead", that makes it a lot clearer. I just would like us to do, and we could do the signage because we should have some of those signs anyway. And I don't want to see any change orders on our project, but.
I think one of the issues brought up in the letter is maybe some cooperation from Moody County on some of those gravel roads. Have you visited with them at all?
Well, that was another issue that I was going to bring up. We have been working with Moody County on some of them gravel roads. I know this spring, when it did get awfully soft down there, we actually maintained those roads to help them out, to help the people out down there. We sent our gravel down there with our maintainer to get those roads built back up to where they're safely passable.
Snowwear removal, are we doing that too?
We hadn't done that, but we-
Part of the complaint was there hadn't been plowed.
We can, we can add that to the route. It might not be on the priority, but we can add it to the route. You know, the priority would be to get the people to follow the detour.
Right.
But I know what you're saying.
Here's my observation of the entire thing, is we announced that we were going to close the intersection, then we didn't totally close the intersection. We allowed some of those people access to go through and around the barricades, and we kind of created our own little bit of a problem there by allowing that to happen while the river was flooding. And then, you know, we could work a couple days, so we put the barricades back up, and pretty soon the barricades got moved and nobody was out there watching them. So we created some of our problem with the high water by having it open, having it close. If we're going to be able to get this open by the end of January, and it's important for them to stage their equipment in that area, I can see that because I've seen all the stuff sitting out there. To me, it's just plain close it, and when the construction company moves a barricade to get their equipment in, they got to put it back, and just keep it closed so that we don't, there is no issue. And proper signage, the road closed well before the bridge on both ends. Those signs have been there, I've seen them. Probably need to be maybe lighted or message center, I don't care which, but it just seems we've got a, we've either, it's open or it's closed. Because people are driving down there thinking this, "I got through here yesterday, I can't today." And now I got to go all the way around, and it creates some problems. So if we can maintain those roads, the gravel roads, for those few people that need to go that way first, that can't go the other detour, don't want to come all the way up to the sunny road to get around to the interstate, I think that's more important for us to be consistent than the road closure. Preferably you close it and get it done.
Okay.
Those are my thoughts. Any other comments or questions?
I just, I just want to ask if you had any update on the Thirty-Fourth Avenue drainage. I know you mentioned you had a phone call with-
The third over here, but I guess I don't have much of an update right now, Larry.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Any other comments? Thank you, Brian. Next, we'll have the Sheriff's report from Marty.
I just want to say one thing, Mike. You said one thing, I said another thing. Did we give Brian any direction then? Because if I feel one way and you feel another way, it'd be nice to know what everybody else thinks.
I would like him to talk to the DOT and find out exactly how they would like to handle it at this point and the construction company, and take their advice on which way to handle it because, in my opinion, we've created a lot of problems, or they have, by opening and closing it. It's either one or it's the other. It's either they're all open and bypassable or it's not.
And the problem is, for example, this citizen that sent this email, it adds twenty minutes onto his commute to Sioux Falls to work one way every day. And if we don't need to have that road closed, and I understand we need it closed when they're working, okay, but when they're not working, when we get in, when we start getting snow here and they're not working, I understand the safety concerns he's talking about, driving on the gravel roads and trying to make that work.
But what are the pushbacks on that? As if it's a snow event that they're not working. Are we plowing that road? Are we moving the barricades and plowing it to allow people to get through that little bit of a corner? Are we asking them to move their equipment because it's going to snow tomorrow so we can open the road? I mean, that, those sort of inconsistencies cause problems.
Their equipment's not in the way. Their equipment's not-
It very well could be.
Okay, it hasn't been. That was the thing. There wasn't equipment sitting so you couldn't make the turn. But I'm not sure that we were clear on what we'd like Brian to do.
Brian, your comments.
I will come up with a designated route that we will keep open as far as the gravel goes. And currently, right now, I was down there yesterday. They had two excavators, two cranes, and three trailers of support equipment sitting on the road. And then also their staging area for their steel. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of material out there that could create a danger if somebody would happen to be trying to cross each other, not just going the one way. And that was the contractor's concern, was two cars meeting in that area.
Brian, it's not really your choice, really. I mean, I think it's the DOT's project, isn't it?
Correct.
And they're, I mean, you can ask them to try to open it up, but if they turn around and say, "No, we're closing this off like we originally had planned", and it did, it caused problems. I guess the people over there on the other side, I guess, I'm not saying they're fortunate, but they had a lot of months that they got a chance to go through rather than taking the thing for almost six months. Now we got to get the project done. We got to close it off, we got to let them get their stuff done, and then as soon as they can get that bridge done, they can move and we can open it up. I just, I don't think we want to, like Commissioner Bartley said, have consistencies for snow events, move while it's open, now it's not open, and now I got to turn around and drive back. The alternative is, is they're moving them rather than turn around and drop them back, which causes a problem. So, I mean, we can ask the DOT to say, "Hey, you know, change this", but, you know, it's their project, it's their thing, and they're, and they originally had closed it off completely for the whole project, but let it go for a long time because it couldn't work, and now they need to close it off. And I just think we got to leave it that way.
And I guess that's why I brought up the message board too, is that would be an effective means of communication if that's something that you guys would want to look at.
Do, what sort of cost analysis? You got to have two, obviously.
Well, roughly, you know, I looked just briefly on the internet yesterday. They're fifteen thousand apiece, fifteen thousand apiece.
Is that true to your mind, Commissioner Pierce?
It might.
But I also wanted to bring up the fact that these message boards could not only be used on this project, but in future projects. I know we've had a lot of these roads where we go to close them down. I warn, give you guys the heads up that we're going to be working on these, but not all the time do we get the message out to the public. We had a few instances this year where people went around our barricades and then they can't get back out because one was a semi trailer over by Bruce, and he sat there nearly eight hours. You know, he got stuck on the road, so it might be advantageous in the future to have these. Not saying that we got to do it all at once, but it's more or less just a communication means for us, because not everybody listens to the radio, not everybody looks at the paper and looks at the minutes.
Well, we do have several bridge projects in the next few years that we could use in foreign addition to your other maintenance issues, so I think possibly you need to come back with some concrete proposals on costs and analysis of what could be done.
I will do that.
And then let us go from there. Is that agreeable with the rest of you? Thank you. Now we're down to the Sheriff's Department, Marty.
Yeah, message boards, I would promote that in a second because there's times that the message boards could be used also at an accident site. There's many uses for those message boards, so I would, I would hope the Commission will look at that because I think that would, in the long run, might save some lawsuit money. Just like the barricade situation, just to comment quickly before I go into my report, is that John called me also and concerned about the movement of the barricades. The problem is, is kind of what Commissioner Bartley says, that barricades have been moved and inconsistencies. I doubt if I can, you know, arrest anybody for going around the barricades. I don't think the state's attorney would go for arrest when we were moving them, they hadn't moved. Now, I'm having a deputy meeting tomorrow, and I am going to visit with my deputies that try to, when they're down on that end of the county, to go and check those barricades. But I can't guarantee they're going to get there every night. It's going to be, you know, the, upon the calls for service and the volume of calls that we got, but we are going to try to, try to look at that as much as we can during the night hours. That's what I'm concerned about is night hours. Somebody coming from Sioux Falls or whatever in the evening moves the barricades and then they're not, not ready for the night, then someone moves them in the middle of the night. So we'll try to do the best we can. I can't, like I says, I can't guarantee my deputies are going to get there every night, but we'll try to, we'll try to watch that end too, so, anyway. Just to get, go on my report, you know, my department's been busy, it's just like all the departments. We're all busy in our own ways for the amount of work that we have going. We have, at the present time, I have forty-one in custody. I have one out of, one in the hospital, and I'll talk about that later. I have one hundred and fifty-five on twenty-four seven, and I won't go through those because as I talk every two weeks, we keep busy with the twenty-four seven program. Just to talk a little bit about what's been happening in the jail. The night before, last night, not last night, but the night before, I had an inmate having stomach issues and had to be taken to the hospital for an appendix. Removed the appendix, he's back in custody. He was in, I suppose he was, I think we got him back about three o'clock yesterday. Trying to check prices, it's the end of, it's the end of budget time, and I'm working with Vicki, trying to keep her on top of contingency because I'm definitely going to need contingency in the, on the jail side. An appendix approximately is fifteen thousand dollars for that operation. May get Medicaid prices on that, so we won't know exactly how much that will be until I get the bill. But just roughly from the hospital, it's about fifteen thousand dollars. Also, our inmate that was pregnant, is no longer pregnant because she had her baby. She went in by emergency Friday night, the fifteenth, the fifteenth, by ambulance to Brookings and in Brookings Center to Sioux Falls. She had her baby yesterday. Bart, are you in here? Was it yesterday? Okay. My nurse is working on what is going to be our responsibility for payments and what Medicaid is going to pick up. So she's, she's working with them. At first, it was talking about any pre-NATO was going to be up to the county to pay, and then after the baby, by the baby's being born, and then after that Medicaid will pick up. But I don't know, Medicaid may pick up a little bit more prior, but I'm not sure. So we won't know exactly until those bills start coming in and what's going to be the county's responsibility and what's going to be Medicaid. But Medicaid is going to pick up some of, some of the cost of that. I just don't know. But you're looking at, I don't know, a hundred thousand maybe? I don't know. We'll just have to wait and see. Also, we had a fatality accident, eighteen-year-old, a little tough on my office on that accident. And Toronto Fire Department responded to that also. And this eighteen-year-old was familiar in the White area, so that's kind of taken a toll on over there. Saturday night, I had a patrol deputy responding to a fire call, and he was on the interstate and hit a deer. I'm pretty much sure that the patrol car is totaled. It's a new patrol car, fifteen thousand miles on it. Insurance has been notified, our insurance, and right now they estimate about twenty-two thousand dollars damage. It's probably going to be totaled, so we'll just have to wait and see. It was a new patrol car. It's amazing that we don't have more deer accidents. The deer are really moving right now. Deputy was slightly injured. He had to be checked out at the hospital, sprained his wrist, but it could have been worse. I'm having, I'm having inmate issues with inmates not getting along in their cells. I'm running a room to put them. I have two inmates that have, I'm working with the state's attorney on two inmates, but if I, if it doesn't get resolved by noon tomorrow, I'm going to have to take them to Falk County. I just can't, I don't have, I can't put them anyplace else. They start fights in their cells and, and I, I'm just overcrowded, basically, just overcrowded. So the female that's in Sioux Falls is La Vera. She's scheduled to come back to the facility tomorrow at three o'clock. I have a problem inmate in her cell right now because it's vacant. So by three o'clock tomorrow, if I don't, if we don't have something worked out, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to send him to Falk County. And it's not the state's attorney's fault, I'm not. He's over there going, "Ah, the sheriff's after me". I'm not. It's, it's just one of those things, so. But he's trying to help me out. He doesn't get what he wants to do. He's got a plan. If it don't work, I'm just going to tell you it's going to cost us some money.
Unfortunately, I can only move as fast as the defense attorneys move.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
One of them was in my office, and I tried to- I know, I know. One of them was in my office and I tried to goose him a little bit, but we'll see what happens. But he, uh, Dan's trying to work with me on this and he said in the future too that he'll work with, try to, you know, we got, uh, this ingestion of, of methamphetamine is, 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 uh, an issue, but a lot of times they, it's other crimes with them, you know, that they've committed an assault and different things and so forth. I have an inmate upstairs that is arrested for aggravated assault. He shouldn't be upstairs. But I can't put him downstairs because nobody wants him in their cells downstairs. But he's, he shouldn't be upstairs. That's, that's the thing. Is, uh, I have no cells upstairs. It's all one big room and, and everybody else that's up there is sentenced, sentenced individuals on low-grade felonies, you know, so it, it, my classification is, is, uh, um, you know, just out the door and stuff, so. Okay, I probably giving enough gloom and doom.
Can I just ask, what's, what's Falk County charging per day?
Uh, eighty. I think it's eighty. Yep, yep. Also, another thing that we're trying to do is that we're having a lot of violations with the twenty-four seven in other, in other counties. And so, in other words, we put, our court puts someone on twenty-four seven in, in, in Yankton, okay? If they violate, we have to go get that person and bring them to Brookings County and put them in our, and put them, put them, put them in Brookings County. But we could leave them in that county for two days. I just have to pay that county. Well, Yankton County charges seventy dollars a day, so that's a hundred and forty dollars for, or whatever. And, uh, uh, we had an inmate that we, or that, uh, we had a, a, a person picked up from Yankton County on a warrant, so they were gonna have to transport, they were gonna have to come here to transport their Yankton guy to go back to, to Yankton. So Bart worked a deal out with the, with the jail there, is that we took the Yankton guy to Yankton and then they're keeping the two guy for two days. So we're, we're doing that. There's some counties, it'll be cheaper for, for us to go ahead and pay, pay them than to, to get a transport officer, maybe two transport officers depending on, in a car. So it's just cheaper to pay that county, you know, so that's, we're looking at that. And, uh, actually, uh, my, uh, office manager has it down because when we, when we, uh, uh, put together how much it costs us for transports, he's got the cost of a deputy transportation mileage and all that. And so we're gonna gear, gear that towards what's more logical. Leave them there and pay the county to hold them than to bring them back. So we're trying to do things to.
Okay, Marty, I'm gonna need to suspend your report for a moment.
Actually, I'm done. I'm done. I'm gonna, I, I'll hold it.
You're finished? That's great. We have a nine o'clock scheduled. If you have more, you can come back.
No, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. At nine o'clock, I scheduled a gentle item from Oslo Township Supervisor Scott Bierke. Discussion and possible action on financial assistance to the township. Scott, would you come up and introduce yourself? Make your presentation to us.
I wrote a number here somewhere, but I don't suppose I can find where it's at. Um, oh. I'm Scott Bierke, uh, supervisor for Oslo Township. Um, I guess the reason I'm, excuse me, the reason why I'm here is, um, truthful, first we're in the process of getting our FEMA money back, which is, Dave Peterson was here too. He's actually on the phone with the FEMA guy now. Um, I think we get, our estimate was like, these numbers aren't right on the money. Say six thousand dollars is what our estimate was. It turns out it's gonna be, I think the actual cost was closer to fifteen. Um, I just stopped and looked at a couple of numbers before I left this morning. Um, in October of twenty eighteen, our balance, money we had available was fifty-six thousand dollars. Of course, we had, we hadn't paid our gravel bill from last year. We hadn't paid our, you know, that all come after that, so that used up a pretty good portion of that, but we were able to put on the majority of that on our roads last year to fix them up. This year, right now, be going into October, we had three thousand dollars. The end of October, we got a little bit of our, uh, whatever, the money we get from the county. I think it was up to about seven thousand the end of October, but we had to pay checks. We hadn't paid guys for grading their stuff the month or two before that. So we're basically back to broke again until we get, I suppose our tax money maybe comes in this month. It'll be a better, bigger check. But we hadn't put any gravel or anything on.
Thank you. Can I answer a question for you when that check comes?
Yeah, the check you should get in the bank today. It's twelve thousand forty-five dollars. So, just so you are aware of that.
Okay, so that'll be kind of what we have to go forward is gonna be our brunt of it. Um, hopefully we get our FEMA money, but I guess the one thing, the reason, the main reason I was here is we applied with Brian for culverts from you guys this spring. I believe it was a fifty footer and a sixty footer. Last year we put one. You guys were nice enough. You paid for the one. It was a cost share deal last year. You know, we pay half, you pay half. Um, we couldn't get it put in last year because the contractor couldn't get there. The water was too high. So we bought the con, the culvert and you guys ended, we didn't get it put in till the spring. Um, that culvert did fail the spring, washed the whole road out, so we had to, luckily, thank goodness, we had the culvert to put it in. It was sitting there. But there's, I think I counted on the way to town. I think there's seven culverts in that creek going through our co- township. And we've replaced two of them now. And I guess what I was wondering is if you guys would consider, we don't have the money to put them in now, but the ones that are in are in bad shape. So if we could, would you guys consider paying your half of the two culverts so we have them? And then we would put them in in the spring. Because if they fail, that, I mean, it's a major thing for us to go try to find the money if it's a bad spring. I mean, I can deal with eighteen-inch, twenty-four-inch culverts that go bad. But when we have to get one of these, because it's, I mean, it's on a bus route, it's on a mail route, when they go bad, you can't just drive to here and then buy one. Because if they're not making that culvert, you gotta wait till they make it. Because they don't just, last time they didn't have the right one. So I guess, I guess the, the main thing I was gonna ask is if you guys would consider doing your half and buying them so we had them. And then, I mean, we're going to put them in. It's just, so we have them there. Because if, if they go bad and everybody has a bad spring, you guys aren't gonna have any, I mean, if the money's already there or it was okayed, I mean, we can put them in. That's the main.
Quick, quick question. Is, is the culvert cost, um, similar to what our approval is, or, or is it more than that?
Well, I think it worked out. I think the culverts, and I didn't have any of that. I apologize. I've been, um, I think the culverts were a hundred and ten dollars a foot if I remember correctly, give or take.
Okay.
So, and I think it, it worked out to about that. The labor probably costs, it's really close to what the culverts were. I can't remember the, I don't have the stuff that I turned in for the application.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, yes, you're welcome.
You were approved for two different projects. You, we did one with you in twenty eighteen.
Yes.
A cost share. And then you were approved for a, two additional projects in nineteen through the grant program. So are the culverts, culverts that you're talking about part of those two, those projects for nineteen?
Yes, that is the, the nineteen project is what it is.
So you can see on the one spreadsheet I handed out that has kind of that yellow bar, um, uh, off to the right, up in the top in the first round, Oslo Township. There's Oslo one and Oslo two. They have two different culvert projects. And we approved them for about, almost forty-five hundred for the first one and about fifty-two hundred for the second project. So, um, I would, you know, since those were approved for this year and we would accept any, if, if the project had been done and they brought us back the estimates,
We could have done it.
We would have paid for our fifty percent, um, those two, that amount for that, those projects. So I think what, what Scott's asking for now is just the cost of the culvert because they can't do the work anymore this year.
And then we, we would have them available, which, like I said, if we would have went and bought, you're right, if we would have borrowed the money, it would have went through. But the shape we were in, I didn't feel it borrowing money to do something that wasn't totally failed right now. But the bottoms are all rotted and they're, I mean, they're shot.
I guess when my thought was starting this was, uh, um, Brian, do we, do we ever hold on to culverts or anything like that? Do we ever purchase them and hold on to them at our place? Because maybe an option would be for us to purchase the two culverts that are needed there. We purchase them now. We hold them in our yard. And then they're there immediately in the spring if you need it, rather than going to here on or going to having them made. Um, and is that something that we could then do it that way?
When I showed up this year, we had some culverts that were growing roots. They'd been out on the site for a couple of years. You know, that's kind of the intention, is to put them out of the way near the site. So when they, we do go to install them, they're right on site. Uh, typically working with a landowner or anything like that. So that's something we can do. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to get away from that on our, on our system, but it is something that, that is an option. Is to be able to, to purchase them the year before they're put in, you know?
And then, so you'd leave them on site? You wouldn't leave them at our, um, our, our area, their fenced-in property at?
I mean, I could. It's just the, you know, a sixty-foot,
Right.
seven-foot culvert takes up quite a bit of room.
Right.
And they're buried at Hall. We had to.
Yeah, they're, they're not very fun to handle.
So once you got them on the, the truck, you wanna get them to where they need to go?
Correct.
Scott, were these sites, uh, submitted with the FEMA disaster? They were not?
Because they had, the two that we're replacing haven't failed yet. The one that we put in didn't qualify because it didn't, it was, I shouldn't say that. The one that we put in, I'm not sure the date it failed. I think it failed aft, the, the only FEMA, um, timeframe was April or what, March fourteenth, uh, April twenty-something? And if you, you didn't do the work in that time period, it doesn't matter. You don't, you can't submit. So, and it was there and I guess I feel that was already cost shared through you guys. So even if it would have been, I mean, we, we agreed to do ours and we did. And I mean, like I said, it, so.
Is it just a matter of placing the order for the culverts to make sure that they're available?
Yeah.
I mean, if, 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 if we place the order and paid for it and let them sit at the culvert's lot and then move them when we need them, is that a available option?
Yeah, I mean, they've, I've had culverts sitting here on over a year also. So I mean, as long as they know they got the order, they can essentially bill us, similar to what we did on these box culverts. You know, they can sit on the site. They don't prefer it that way, but, you know, we've already owned the culverts. It's just the fact of getting the delivery done.
All right, the backup to that question, is it more appropriate for you to order those culverts with our financial security versus a township which may not, they may not wanna build one for a township without prepayment? Are we prepaying it if we are, order them and they sit there for a year? Or are we just ordering or?
Yeah, we.
Pay a dollar payment or do we pay for it? Prepay it?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I like the idea of not transporting it only one time to the, to the site, but if it's possible to keep it until you need it and have it transported.
Well, we, we have, I mean, the, the storage part of them, there's pasture right. I mean, there's no problem in getting them off the right away and, you know, stored until we put them in. That's not a, but I guess my thing was, so we knew that next year we didn't, if we have a bad spring, I don't have to come back if everybody has one and try to get ten thousand dollars to replace two things that I know are bad. This way, if we have it, at least that's our stake in the ground that we can get them put in in the spring.
The only other caveat to that I'd like to bring up too, we know the cost of the culverts this year.
Uh huh.
As we have our current annual bid set in place, where next year we don't know what steel prices are gonna do.
So at this point in time, the amount of money that we, we have appropriated here that our half approval of forty-four ninety-eighty and fifty-two twenty-eight fifty would cover the cost of the culverts if we purchased them. Now, seems pretty simple that we just purchase these culverts and we subtract it out of our, 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 uh, our share that we pay you and we've paid for the culverts, have them delivered.
And then that, as a, yeah, as part of that, the
Of part of the project.
For the spring. Yep, okay. Not, okay, yep. And that would be great. I mean.
And then we need to probably do an extension for these, don't we? Because we had originally said these need to be done, uh, by the end of the year. And so are we gonna have to discuss that then too? Because there's a few that didn't get in like these.
Right.
Didn't we already discuss that? I thought we had talked about that last time.
No, we really didn't discuss extending that because the, the, it's true. I mean, we only have budget authority to spend this money in twenty nineteen. That's why we wanted, um, the work turned in. Now, I don't, you know, this is a little bit outside the scope because we said, you know, we wanted to be built for the project. They would pay for the project and then submit their claims and then we, we would reimburse for the project up to fifty percent after Brian had a chance to look it over. So this is a little outside, outside that scope because now what they're asking for is just the cost of the culverts instead of the cost of the project. So I think you would maybe need to entertain that request from these other townships. I know if Brian would reach, could reach out if that's something that we would do for the other townships that were approved for projects.
Currently, right now.
The only other ones would be Eureka had a couple, and then Preston had another project.
Preston is, is going to finish theirs, so the only other outlying one we will have is Eureka.
Eureka would be the only other township that would, we'd have to have that discussion with.
I would make a motion that our highway department order the two culverts and the county pay for them, that they be delivered to Oslo Township to be stored until you need them, wherever they're supposed to be. And that, that comes out of the grant that we awarded to Oslo Township. And it's not gonna cost more than what we've already said we would given the grant. Did I understand that correctly? That'd be my motion.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
And so, at the end then, when the project does get done, um, we'll have the final bill, but it won't be a full bill, but we'll, full bill we'll take in consideration what we've already purchased and what the final bill there. And then we'll figure that out at the end of who's paid more, who gets a credit at the end.
No, because these dollars end in twenty nineteen, December thirty-one. These dollars go away. So if they want to come and reapply, if we come up with that process for twenty twenty, because we do have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for twenty twenty for something similar, if that's what we choose to do with it, um, they would need to, Oslo Township would need to reapply then for the, the installation piece of that and get approved for, you know, we can look back at this and say, okay, we've already paid for the cost of the culvert, so we will pay up to the difference for the installation cost.
If it was higher than the cost of the culvert.
Correct.
But yeah, we're not, I mean, I'm fine with if we can get them, you know, per, I mean, I'd be great with just getting them sitting there. And then we'll, if we can, if our FEMA money would happen to come through and weather would permit, I'd love to see them in the ground if the water goes down. But if not, they're, I mean, I'm very happy if we can just have them. If that's fair. And if you do it again next year, there's still, what, four or five, you're probably gonna see me again because they're all put in about the same time, so.
I gue, I guess, I was thinking, so that, we can't do an extension then? You're saying budgetarily wise, we can't do an extension for anybody on, that hasn't gotten them in?
I guess I don't know.
We don't have the budget authority established in twenty twenty to do that. Now, once we get to twenty twenty, if you choose to do that, you'd have to do a supplemental budget hearing to give us additional budget, budget authority beyond the hundred thousand that we have in twenty twenty. Because the dollars that we have budgeted this year, um, we lose budget authority to spend those on twelve thirty-one or one-one of twenty twenty.
I just didn't want them to have to reapply. I just wanted to extend, like if a project that we're putting a bridge in doesn't get done in a year and it goes to next year, um, it still goes on, gets done. I would want this project to still go on and get.
And I think that can be a discussion next year with those dollars that we have budgeted, when we could get to that to say, okay, how do you want to expend those funds? If you say, anybody who was approved in twenty nineteen and didn't get their project finished, they're automatically approved and we just transfer those dollars into twenty twenty. And then we have X amount of dollars left for additional projects to be, um, to be applied for.
I think what I'm hearing Scott say is if you guys will go, if we'll pay for the culverts right now, they'll install them and, and.
Yeah, but the rest of the cost should, should be ours anyway.
They'll be ours anyway.
For any more money. If we get the culvert paid for.
If you come back next year for culverts, it's gonna be the other culvert.
Next year would be for more culvert.
This basically satisfies this part.
Yes, that'd be great.
You weren't done with it because of weather.
Yeah.
That's, that's the exception. It just wasn't done to.
Yeah, well, we.
All we're modifying is, is our request to be finished and built with. We're just gonna prepay it.
And Stacy, your opinion, Eureka should, um, Brian should reach out to Eureka?
I think if, yeah, Brian would reach out to Eureka yet this year to see if they would want to do something similar to what we're approving today, potentially here when we do the, do the vote, but for Oslo Township. Or if they're, um, you know, if we get kind of a consensus that for twenty twenty, if they don't want to do that, but they want to essentially be pre-approved for the.
Or if they're, um, you know, if we get kind of a consensus that for twenty twenty, if they don't want to do that, but they want to essentially be pre-approved for the same dollar amount in twenty twenty, we just move that forward. I think it can be handled either way.
The only, my only problem was, was the way we set this up was it was, project was we done. We were going to have Brian take a look at it and make sure it got done and the, and the township did it. Now we're expending our funds without any thing that's going to get the project done. I mean, that could, I mean, it, it's, we have no guarantee. They have, you know, he's sitting here saying, yeah, we want to do that, but if they have no money to put it in next spring. Because of the hard winter, we've got two culverts sitting there, expended the funds and. Are they our culverts or are they Oslo Township culverts? And so that, I mean, it's a little bit of devil's advocate here, but that's. How we originally set this up was to make sure the project got done and the bills were paid. Here, we're just giving them the money right out front, hoping they get it done.
And, and I think that we can, should be able to depend on Oslo Township to do that. And if they don't. And if that isn't done to the satisfaction of our highway department, when they come back next year and want another grant, we'll all talk about that. And if that's an issue, we'll address it at that time.
To me, I see it almost as a loan. Because if I went to the bank and borrowed the money. I could have them put in right now and it would all work. It's just that I don't have, then I don't have to pay interest on everything until I get the funding. So I'm just trying to get around having to go borrow money is what I'm trying to do.
I understand.
But they should still have to work with Brian like the grant application said and all of that. And if there ends up being a problem, there won't be another grant, I wouldn't think, maybe to Oslo Township, so.
Like if they're not installed as, as promised, there would be another grant for the other three or four that they need done, so.
They will get.
The onus is on them to, to perform.
Scott, the cost of the, uh, culverts is similar to the cost of the contractor?
From what I remember, yes. I don't have the deal. It's, it's, it's going to be.
It's very close.
Yeah, I would guess it'd be, and, and especially if we have both of them, it always helps with loading equipment and.
Right.
Because they're not that far apart. So it would be good if we could do them, they'd get put in the same time.
Which scenario could be different if we have a lo- larger culvert? The cost of culvert could be a lot more than the installation.
Oh, absolutely.
Yours is similar in price, so.
Yeah, and the last one we put in, I think, had six feet of fill over it. These are. M- maybe a foot in the biggest one, you know, because they lay pretty flat, so.
I think if, if Ryan's concern about we're not doing it the way we said we would do it, we could probably, after this motion is handled. Change our policy on that particular one to.
No, and I, and I, that's not the case. I just wanted to have the conversation.
Yeah, no, I mean, we could, we could go back in and say circumstances have changed, we changed that policy, here's a motion to do it and blah, 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 and we're done. Uh, but I don't know that it's necessary either. But we could modify it just for paperwork if you want. Any other discussion? Will the clerk read the motion since it's been a while?
Yep, so the motion was by Pierce, seconded by Borzma to order two culverts. Um, and to be delivered to Oslo Township with the funds the county approved.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Borzma?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll let you work with Brian on that. All right, we'll go back to our, uh, department reports. So we'll go with finance with Vicky. You're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To give you an update from our office, all of the delinquent letters are sent out, so. We're, um, getting some payments in for people that forgot to pay their taxes, so that's good. And, uh, last week, um, Kristen and Jenna, oh, it's two weeks ago, I guess. Kristen and Jenna went to election training out in Pier and also Jennifer went to debit credit training with legislative audit in Pier. Um, the levies are into the state. They have not been approved yet, but I don't think they've started approving any of the, of the, um, our county's levies yet. Special assessments, I just finished those, so they are into the state and. They will be approved hopefully soon after the levies. And I have been working with some of the, um, department heads regarding budgets and. Until I talked to Marty, we were really doing good with the contingency, but, um. We still don't have a lot of requests yet for a contingency, so I'll be working with Stacy and we'll. Have some of that here with December fast approaching, so we are working on that. And one thing we ordered for the election part of our office is we. Ordered, um, some cabinets that they can use in the election room. Um, downstairs for absentees. It was a cost of twenty-four hundred dollars. We went through office peeps and it's got a. Place where the ballots go and that's all locked in and it looks very professional. It's on wheels and. For a minimal cost of twenty-four hundred dollars, I think it was money well spent. So we are ready for. Next year when it comes to, um, doing the absentee precinct in that election room. Right now, they're still there. Um, we're hoping that we can leave them in that room, but, um, we will see. If we have to transport them back and forth from downstairs, but. You can stop in and look at them. They aren't set up the way they're going to be, but I think that they did a nice job and they look good. And also you received in your packet, the auditor's, um, finance officer's report and. We have four be noted items, the auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives totals, the highway expenditure report and the register of deed statement of fees collected. And I don't know if there's any questions on the finance officer's report. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Vicky. Next, we will do, uh, Kristen with the Brookings Outdoor Adventure Center. Brookings County Outdoor Adventures, BCOAC. I'll get that correct. Kristen, please come up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Sorry, I was on the phone with Laura. We're setting up interviews right now for our, um, two open positions for membership assistants, so. Um, I think we have to reschedule for today, so apologize for sneaking out, but we do have a third one scheduled. Um, so we did, um, have our pumpkin check-in again this year and we had over a hundred people there, so. We definitely had a much better turnout than we did last year and, um, we had people who asked us, all right, when is it scheduled for next year? So we did go ahead and set our date for next year and we're going to continually do it on the Saturday after, um, Halloween. So November seventh will be our date next year. Uh, we went ahead and took the outlying edges, um, there to the west. And we kind of chucked it down our property line, the county's property line there, um, along the, the shelter belt. So with that, talking about the parking lot, they did come and put the last two inches on. Um, we do have what we like to call a little bird bath OAC, big enough for a decoy, but, um, it's asphalted. So it's, uh, definitely a lot, lot better situation and people are extremely excited to not have to do any parking in mud this year. Um, all the mining for the lead was taken out. Um, so in the time period that the county has owned the facility. Um, we took sixteen thousand pounds of lead out of the facility. When the nonprofit had it the entire time, they ended up taking fourteen thousand pounds out when the county took over. So we have definitely had more shooters in the facility, um, since we have, since we've had the building. So it just kind of shows the, the amount of usage we've had. Um, we've set all the dates for the enhanced concealed carry program for next year. We've already had fifteen people enroll for between January and February's classes. So even though we have the, the new open carry law, um, starting in, in July, we already definitely have people coming in. Um, the four H shooting sports, they had a huge turnout, um, on our, uh, last free range Sunday. Uh, that was definitely a big day for them. They had like a hundred people come through, I think is what Sonia said. Um, so definitely they've got new instructors coming in, uh, BB programs. So pretty excited to have that many kids coming in through the youth programs. Highway patrol started coming in using, um, the building for training, not only for shooting, but also for their taser program. So that was, uh, interesting to watch all the guys get shot with tasers. Definitely not getting shot myself, but it was fun to watch everyone else. Um, our veterans shoot free has been amazing this month. A lot of new people we've been able to meet and, um, a lot of new memberships as well from. Um, individuals that, you know, have some great stories. We have a whole bunch of new event procedures that have gone into place, working, um, with Laura and a lot of our staff to make sure things run a lot smoothly in the future. And a new wildlife program with game fishing parks, um, talking about animals and species, anywhere from Africa to Canada to across the Midwest. So that's what's happened in the last month. Any questions?
Any questions for Kristen?
On the parking lot, is that completely done now or will they be back in the spring to do anything to it or?
I'm looking at Larry.
Does that get striped or anything or that?
That was my question. Is it going to be stripped?
It'll be striped, but, uh, there's a couple of areas on the west side that though, where it's extremely soft and they're going to come back and work on those, they told me, so.
That's where we call it Lake OAC. It, it's not bad. You know, it's a, a good little puddle. Rocco Morano from Game Fishing Parks and I put a decoy out there yesterday and we shot a picture laying down, so it looks like there's a duck in front of our building and. Anyways, we just thought it was something fun and still, you know, kind of the, the shooting sport. Austin from Razor's Edge did come out to where the mud is soft right there at our entrance and we put in a lot of river rock and kind of softened that hard line and edge there. Um, so it does really kind of go into, um, the landscaping and doesn't look like it's got a hard edge. Um, so definitely pulling all that back together and just sprucing up the sides there.
Talk, um, is that west end where we had the issue with the, uh, compaction problem and had to pull that out? So I think that just is kind of leading to more issues over on that west end. That the underground material is just not good at all.
That's where when they dug, they hit that, that groundwater and then they had to keep pumping that out and. Um, I believe that was where the change order was, was required as well.
I got a feeling that will be, continue to be an issue as we keep going down the road. So we'll probably see what happens over the spring and us. Thaw and frost type of issue, so.
Maybe we can just dig down a few feet and put in a pond and do ice fishing or something else and let game fishing parks have a, a couple of events out there, so. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Kristen. Next, we'll have, uh, county planning, emergency management, Richard.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, late yesterday afternoon, Brookings County received notice that the state of South Dakota was approved for the. Fourth presidential disaster and Brookings County was approved for the individual assistance program. And we will get ahold of the people that called in on two-one-one register line. We can go back. We're going to call them and let them know what they need to do. On there, but it's open up to anybody, not just the people that called in on two-one-one. So biggest thing is they need to register. They need to call eight hundred six-two-one-three-three-six-two or register online for any, uh, potential losses for. Home repair, rental assistance, if they were displaced, um, personal property loss, childcare losses, medical bills, funeral expenses and vehicle damage, so. That's what, when you send press releases out, so that'll be coming out in the paper. So that was our big. And there'll be more news coming from the state as they release that, as they get more, so.
Richard, quick question on that. You know, this is more for individual assistance, so individual homeowners and different things like that. So we're not talking the townships like.
Correct. Yep, this is just individual assistance. I'm looking that, the township aspect will be coming later on. So, but as of yet, the, yesterday they just released the individual assistance, so.
Now, does, do, does the repairs have to be, have made now to that kind of stuff too again?
That I don't know. They need to call, this is typically between the homeowner and the FEMA representatives. So they, they need to call and register first and they will, then FEMA will get ahold of the individual and set up an individual one-on-one. Uh, appointment with them to go over their losses. Then after that, it's continued on, so.
Okay, and this is Brookings County, so this would include any, any community in Brookings County?
Yes.
Everything, the whole, it's not, it's not like just outside of counties, that municipality you're not counting?
Countywide, yep. All the municipalities, wherever there was potential losses from flooding or whatever they had. So, yep.
In the real estate industry, we had to deal with a lot of, uh, clients that had, you know, issues with water in basements or different things like that and so.
So they can, they can apply. They need, like I say, they need to register. First thing, important thing, what they need to do, first of all, is register themselves with FEMA. And FEMA is going to come in and set up a station. They're, they're, it's in the process yet where they're going to set up, but they're going to have. Disaster recovery centers that they're going to set up for these people to come in. And then they'll go and visit with them one-on-one, go over their claims and be yea or nay or, you know, and go from there, so.
But, and so it's September ninth through the twenty-sixth?
Correct, yep.
So if, if that, if something happened to you during those dates?
During those days, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Richard, you, you said you're getting ahold of the small communities?
Yes, they will get notified. It was Aurora and Elkton were the, the two main ones on the two-one-one. But yeah, anybody, any community. And any, um, citizen within the community or in the county of Brookings or wherever can, if they have a loss, they need to register and apply for that.
This would be something that'd be nice, be able to put with their monthly bill or whatever, if they wanted to.
Sure. Yep, we could see about that with the finance office with their monthly billing.
Is there a deadline that they have to call in by? Do we know?
As of yesterday, there was, nothing was said on that, but like I say, I'm sure that, that there'll be coming more information as it becomes available from the state.
Gotcha.
But the biggest thing is, is they need to register is to get it as soon as they can.
Two-one-one calls, do you have any estimate on how many calls you have to return? How many two-one-one calls you actually had?
As of the first part of October, there was a hundred and seventy-six calls, people that had called into two-one-one.
That's pretty impressive, the two-one-one works.
So, Richard, I know Lake Campbell had some serious flooding. Were there other lakes in the county that had flooding also or people had damage?
Not that we, not that we reported to our office, no.
Would you be willing to send a copy of that to the, um, president of the Lake Campbell Improvement Association and Sportsman's Club out there, both of them? They have email mailing lists and they'll get that out to all the Lake Campbell people if you would share that with them.
Lake Campbell's homeowners association?
Lake Campbell Improvement Association.
Were the damages on Lake Ponsett handled by the Hamlin County Emergency Manager?
Yep. We've had no, we've had some shoreline modifications, but we have had no reports of property damage or that we've incurred at our office. They've been going through Hamlin County on those. I don't know, well. I do not, not have. I'd have to go through the original email list to see if they're on the, on the email yesterday, but I don't know if, if Hamlin County was on the list or not. That I don't know.
Probably reach out to them just to make sure if they are or not, because we'll obviously have some people in Brookings County down in Lake Ponsett that could have had some damage. That may not have FEMA funds if Hamlin didn't get approved.
Oh, sure. Correct, yep.
Right, so we'd want to try to get that to our county residents.
This is being published in all the small town papers also and the Brookings Register. And on December or November twelfth, I was at the Basin Electric Deer Creek for their annual safety conference, safety meeting up there for the facilities. Myself, Brookings Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department and Brookings ambulance was there. On the fourteenth, we had the PPC meeting, um, just after action review for the flu vaccination that we did. Yesterday, I was at a two-one-one meeting in Sioux Falls just to go over the September event, just to see how things went, what we needed to change, what we needed to improve. So everything's more on a standardized basis because there's more, more counties involved getting in with two-one-one now with the state, um, uh, that approved that, so. That was a good meeting we had yesterday. Um, this coming, at our zoning meeting in December, it's going to be a joint meeting with the city planning zoning. We're going to start going over the rough. Joint jurisdiction, joint jurisdiction draft ordinance and make progress on that. On December second, I'm going to be up at SDSU presenting a class on zoning to current issues for the decline focus class. And also coming up in November, December timeframe, we'll be, um, setting up an appointment with the state attorney's office to continue our ordinance update progress on there to get that. Up and going again, so. And that's all that I have. Bob was at the conference for the International Association of Emergency Managers, so he'll be back in the office on Friday.
On the, uh, December meeting of the planning and zoning board, that'll take place on. On the December meeting of the planning and zoning board, that'll take place on Monday instead of Tuesday because it had a conflict with the ag bank, county planning and zoning wouldn't have had a quorum. And I, if my recollection serves me right, there is an invitation extended to this group to come and listen to as much of that as you want because when these two groups get done, the next place that ordinance comes is to us and to the city council. And did I understand that right, Mike, since you're sitting on that? So if you're interested in coming and I'm not sure that I've got the time that the joint meeting starts, do you know that?
Seven, 7:00 PM.
Seven PM?
Yep. Monday, December 2nd.
But you might find it helpful to listen, there's gonna be a presentation from First District on the ordinance and then the two different boards will have an opportunity to express any concerns that they've got about the ordinance and you might find that conversation helpful for when it eventually gets to us.
Anything else for Richard? Thank you, Richard. Next we'll have the equalization with Jacob.
Morning. Just wanna piggyback on Rich's report a little bit with the 176 people that had reported to 211 with the property damage. Our office ended up looking at 75 properties for a total value reduction countywide of 850,000. So it was about 10, 11, 12,000 per basement. It was common to remove the basement finish is what we saw so.
Those people that you have contact with, I guess I didn't ask Richard this, but do we have addresses for those people? Could we send them a copy of that notice or how are they finding out? It's just whether or not they happen here on media or?
Well, the 211 reporting has a name, property address, phone number, email address, so there's several ways to contact these individuals.
Are we doing something with getting?
Yes, we're gonna get the list from 211. They sent it in a spreadsheet. We're gonna have, get that notified, 211 will send texts out to them people and we can also mail them out. So we do have that tracking in process. Get in the rest of my report here. The appraisers in my office have wrapped up the countywide commercial property review with nearly 100% completion rate, which is nice. I mean, a lot of times with residential reviews, we get to properties, we can't make contact with the homeowner and we just don't get in, so our information is semi-accurate at that point. But with the commercial review, we were able to get in and accurately review almost 100% of the properties. We're also nearing completion of our countywide building permit review this year, which totaled around 1,200 properties visited and then includes 60 brand-new homes countywide. So we're just finishing up with that. The guys are out in the field now, I'm sure we'll be finished probably by the end of this week or so. On November 13th, Department of Revenue staff conducted their onsite audit of our prior year's sales in which we had 1,175 transfers in Brookings County in the past year. And then the clerks up front in our office are coding those sales as accepted sales or rejected sales and giving a reason either way. Those are all audited. We checked out okay, we had a few errors that were just typos or corrections that were made while he was onsite. They also address our assessment plan for the county and other various office procedures and parcels per appraiser and just kind of monitoring what we're doing with our time and how we're taking care of our paperwork and I guess we are in compliance. There was no findings to note, so that's good news. On November 15th, on Friday, we placed an order for our replacement vehicle for our office on the state bid contract and what we decided on was a 2020 Chevy Equinox all-wheel drive. The order being placed on Friday means it should be ready for delivery mid to late January. And I know we budgeted 20,000 even in our budget for that and it looks like the final price is gonna be about $2,200 over budget, but in conversation with Vicki, it sounds like we should be able to absorb that in another line in our budget. The original plan during budget time was to replace an aging Durango with an Impala and actually the Equinox all-wheel drive is about $500 cheaper than the Impala so. During that audit too onsite by Department of Revenue, it was brought to light there was a couple court case decisions from the past year that might affect our office and how we conduct our partially taxed properties. We have a handful of those throughout the county that are partially exempt and partially taxed because they have a for-profit business on the property. And I think the court case was from Meade County or somewhere out west where it was a VFW that had appealed their tax exemption. They wanted to be fully tax exempt, but they had a for-profit business within the VFW. Court case ruled that you essentially have to follow the money, so the funds were going back into the direction of the VFW, therefore they ruled in favor of them being fully exempt. And we have a handful of properties in Brookings County to review on that same basis. The other court case was in Day County and it pertained to ag land valuation and easement adjustments done by the county. And the court ruled in favor of the county in that there should be no adjustment made because of the management decision to put ag land into an easement program. And, you know, dating back to productivity, when it came on the books in 2010, we're adjusting ag land values and that we're taking the crop inventory of soils and reducing them by 50% to get them down to that grass top dollar value if they have a restrictive easement on the property. And in discussing with Department of Revenue staff, it's not okay to adjust ag land values downward solely for the easement being on the property, but if there's another reason that the easement is on the property, say you can't farm it because of water or rocks or access or some other reason that can be documented, that adjustment can stay on the book. So we have to review probably 15, 20 of those parcels here countywide too. That is all I had.
All right, any questions for Jacob?
That'll affect CRP though, I mean, isn't CRP only being able to go on tillable ground?
What was the end of your question?
That would affect CRP contracts then, wouldn't it? Isn't it? Because isn't CRP only able to be on tillable ground? You can't qualify for a CRP contract unless it's been tilled in the last certain amount of time?
What we've seen is there's a variety of easements out there and every one of those easements is different in how they're restricting the landowner to use that land, whether they're grazing it or haying it or cropping it for part of the year. And we just have to look at those on a case-by-case basis and see if there's another reason for that adjustment to be valid rather than only the easement being on the property. The court case ruling that it's a management decision, so why should you receive a reduction for that?
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you. Next we'll go to the Veterans Department, Mike.
Just a little update what's been happening in our office. This afternoon, I'm sorry. Okay, today at noon, we have the Salvation Army meeting, which I'll be attending again. Wednesday afternoon, I'll be up on campus for the VA side. We have our housing meeting on Thursday and have some questions on that and some of the things that have been taking place because of the large turnover in staff that we've been having. Yeah, there's been somewhat, in my opinion, somewhat of a delay in getting people back on housing again and that's something I've been talking with them about, but when we're at the meeting, it'll be more. Talked about more. Eileen has finished her trip training and now she'll be moving on to the next step. So she's got two of the three steps required for her to get access to the VA computer system and I'm looking really forward to that and that'll be a great addition and give her more ability to do more with VA claims. And I did turn my manual into the state's attorney's office, which I'll be contacting Dan about when we can get together and see if there's any corrections or changes that he would like to see made to that prior to submitting it to you guys. And the other thing, the state's attorney office has been very busy because they've also started looking at dismissing some of those old cases that we talked about before. Otherwise, it seems like our traffic has been picking up some, especially on the veteran side and that's always good because that means that more of the veterans in our county are getting assistance.
Any questions? If not, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Our last report is our weed department. Misty, come on down. Have to mix it up who goes last once in a while.
Good morning. Mike was just saying, yay, I'm before you. I just thought you were saving the best for last. I have a very short report this morning. November 6th, we had the district weed board meeting, went very well out at the BCOAC. I had lots of compliments on the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center facility. That was a mouthful. I actually was asked after it was voted on and decided that the next year's district meeting is in Redfield, why didn't Brookings County suggest again? So maybe 2021 will look at holding, hosting a district meeting again. We'll go from there. Otherwise, very good turnout. I believe there was 50 people that come from surrounding counties to attend this district meeting. I believe it was very well attended. Otherwise, any questions on that from you? No? And then also my last thing, we got all of our equipment is when, has been winterized. Last week, Jeff and a couple guys, and actually it was Jeff's baby, not Brian's, but we got the steel quantit cleaned out and all of my equipment that could be stored in the steel quantit. We got everything moved over there, so there's two bays for the sheriff's department and we're gonna possibly look at putting three blades for the highway department in my shop. So otherwise, I think everything's working out well over there and I'll be spending a lot more time in the office.
Any questions? Thank you, Misty.
Thanks.
We'll move on to the finance office report, those are all B noted items, so we don't need to do anything else with that. We'll move on to census update. Who's doing that?
Bob's not here today. I didn't realize that he wasn't going to be here today when I put that on the agenda. The only thing, I think we're still waiting to hear from the city on setting up that committee and having the first meeting. The only other thing outside of that than I am aware of, we actually had a gentleman from the census stop by yesterday and he had some information on census, the part-time census jobs as we move into 2020. And he asked how, you know, if there's something that we could do to help get that word out. So we did do that on our website as a press release for them to let people know that there are those jobs that are going to be coming, becoming available for them. So been working with them to try to get that word out. So that's all I have for updates on it that I am aware of on my end.
Thank you. Item A is regular business. Item A under regular business is an action to approve resolution number 19-52, a plat of block one Jensen addition in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter section of section 23 Township 1, 10 north range 51 west of the 5th primary area in Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bozma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve resolution number 19-53, a plat of lot one of the Thompson addition in the northwest quarter section, upsection 26 Township 111 north range 49 west of the 5th primary area in Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bozma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve agreement number 19-78, a funding profile agreement between WageWorks and Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
Removed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any comments? Any report on this? Stacy?
Just some of the information off of my staff report regarding this is that, you know, I discussed this at the last meeting, that we need to establish a health reimbursement account, a separate bank account as these claims come in so we can track payments and reimbursement. And they, WageWorks requires that we pre-fund that account with 4% of the county's total risk that we're taking on with this new health insurer, with the new way the health insurance is being done now. So been working with Vicki, we've had some discussions with Russ Olson through legislative audit and because this initial deposit really isn't an expenditure, it's really just transferring cash from, transferring cash to a different account essentially. He said that we wouldn't need to pull that from each individual department, so that makes it a little bit easier on our end. We can just pull it out of one account. I guess I may be looking for some direction from the board. You know, we could, I guess my suggestion would be although that line is already in the red for a commission budget, but it's the next, the next action on the agenda is to establish that. But I would, I guess I would suggest taking it out of professional services from the commission line to get that account. Oh no, we're not doing that. I think we're just taking it out of cash, aren't we? I don't think we have to, so, because it's not a budgeted expense, so I'm talking and I don't need to talk.
And then next year though, we have budgeted to fill.
Yes, and so each department, we budgeted in each department that has employees essentially a portion, a percentage of the risk. And what we will do after 11, when we get, when that budget authority becomes available, what we'll do is we'll take that money and transfer that cash, reduce the budget, transfer the cash into that account so it's there and then we will know and be able to track it by department. That's going to be something that Laura and I will do on our end because it's really not anything that's gonna run through payroll at all, that portion of it, so. But they wanted, WageWorks wants that 4% upfront so that if there are claims right away on 11, that there's already money established in that account.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the section on insurance and that is article... Well, my question is, do we have the insurance in place? It's article seven. Do we have the insurance in place that we say we're going to maintain? And has this gone by our insurer?
I don't know what you're looking at.
I'm looking at article seven. Am I in the wrong document here?
I think you're in the wrong document.
Oh, I'm looking at the Avera telehealth agreement.
Yeah, that's the Avera.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Not the WageWorks, okay, sorry.
But I can answer that question.
When we get to Avera?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll be there in a minute. I'm a step ahead on the contract.
You're out of order.
Sorry. I'll try to behave.
I always wanted to say that. I've been watching TV a lot, you're out of order. All right, any other comments or discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Bozma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve a cash transfer of $7,140 from general fund claim on cash to establish the health reimbursement account, bank account for tracking payment and reimbursement information. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, now we'll have comments.
And again, this is the actual motion then to approve transferring that cash into that bank account. And we crunched the numbers and $7,140 is about that 4% so.
Any other comments, questions? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bozma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is an action to approve agreement number 19-79 and Avera E Care Telehealth Professional Services Agreement Behavioral Health Mobile Crisis between Avera E Care LLC and Brookings County. Is there a motion to approve?
So what I would say is, I received this from Stacy, I believe.
We're trying to get a motion to approve first.
Sorry.
So moved.
You're out of order.
You're out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, comments?
Thank you. Before the board moves to approve this, I received this from Stacy about a week and a half ago. I sent it to our insurer, first name Lynn. She's currently in the process of approving this and looking through it. I asked her to try to get back to me last week, she was unable to because she was tied up with another project, but she had received it, was reviewing it. So I guess I would encourage the board to maybe hold off on approving this until she gets back. gets back to me with any potential changes, uh, cause this, uh, or at least the agreement that was sent to me, um, could be subject to changes from our insurer. So, uh, and the reason I haven't received that yet is because she just hasn't been able to give back to me quite yet, so.
Hey Bart, do you, uh, want to tell us what this is about as far as jail is concerned? Detention center?
I just want to make one comment. I agree.
All right, Marty?
I agree with counsel. I think we should hold off.
All right.
I have questions also.
But just a little bit of a background on, on the request in the first place.
Sure. These, this, um, the Avera E Care, we're in, I'm involved with two different, um, pilot projects on this. Uh, one originally when we got started with this, it was setting it up for, uh, different counties throughout the state was selected to be pilot counties to test run this, uh, Avera E Care. Things weren't moving along real smoothly with that. Avera wanted to work directly with us, uh, and we're still working through the state, uh, pilot on this, but we're doing, uh, what they're calling a, um, it's a pre-pilot. So we're running a pilot to show that the pilot needs to be run bigger, if that makes some sense. Uh, and I forget the term that they use, but I didn't, I figured pilots was what we were supposed to be doing and we just started with everything. But we're sort of, uh, test running this, uh, now for the whole state to see if it's going to work well for the regular part of the pilot. So that's where this comes into play. Uh, there was a go-live date with this. We've already got the, uh, the, um, computer iPads. Uh, they sent us three of those last week. Uh, county IT here, Sean, uh, checked it over yesterday. Everything's working well, uh, to where we can connect straight in with Avera E Care down in Sioux Falls, uh, when we're out on, uh, emergency, uh, behavioral health crisis situations. So we're supposed to go live on Thursday, but I'd, I have no problem and they understand that if we've got some things that we've got to hold off on, we could probably go live next week. Uh, I guess I would ask Dan, is there a potential that we would know this week whether there's going to be any changes?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the next couple of days.
Okay. We have a, we have weekly meetings on this with Avera. Uh, so we have another meeting scheduled, uh, Thursday at one o'clock. Uh, we do a teleconference meeting. Uh, so I can just let them know that this is still pending at the moment and as soon as this goes in, then we can go live and get going.
Our next meeting where we could take action would be December?
10th.
10th. So that delays you about three weeks.
That's fine. That's fine.
We, we got to deal with, we got to deal.
Okay.
Actually I have some issues because we haven't been trained yet. So, you know, Avera, it's my understanding Avera is supposed to send in someone to help and we, so we haven't even got a procedure down yet on what the deputies are supposed to do once, you know, so we, we have some things on our end too. So the delay is fine. I have no issue with that.
Yeah. And I would feel a little more comfortable if we had a little bit of a delay.
Okay.
And the next regular, regular meeting is the 10th, but the commission will be having a special meeting on Monday, December 2nd. Um, that's, was essentially all going to be executive session, but if we're ready to go with this and you are comfortable and, and Dan has had a chance to get any, uh, things updated with it that need to be, there's a potential that we could have this one action item that day two on an agenda potentially. So we have a couple of options.
And, and just clarify this, this is pilot no cost to us as of right now?
Correct.
They're, they're providing the, uh, the tablets technology. All the, all of the iPad tablets. Uh, there is even some talk we had that they may, we've got three right now, uh, but they have, they talked at our last meeting and getting one for every deputy that's out on the road. Uh, just so there's more conformity, you know, that can get more information in for the pilot, you know, to see how it's working. And, uh, the services that Avera is providing when we call into, talk to one of their, their people for a crisis, uh, that in, or that, those services are all covered by the grant that is through the state. So we don't have any expense coming from us at all at this point. That's, that's the nice thing about the pilot.
As of right now.
As of right now. There'll be a cost at some point, but we got to see if it's worth.
Right.
The cost and if there's costs sharing with other counties or cities that want to jump on board so that it's not all expenses for Brookings County, you know? It might be pool from, the only thing is, is I got a, uh, there may be one section in here that I can't find it right now because they talked about the, um, um, because each unit has to have, uh, a cell phone SIMs card. And, um, they don't have, Avera doesn't have an account with, to pay for that. So we'll have to pay for that card upfront and then bill the grant for that, for reimbursements. I don't see that as a big, big issue.
How long will the grant keep paying expenses or whatever related to?
It's a good question. Because the way it reads, it's, it's, uh, renewed every six months. It's under my understanding, it's a two-year grant.
That was my understanding.
So they'll, they'll pay for two years. But as the, uh, when you go on the terms, it's, it'll continue for six months and then provided upon mutual agreement, the parties may elect to extend the agreement additional six months. So, you know, we're going into six months, see how it works and then I guess, but it's supposed to be a two-year grant for expenses.
And I wonder if in the termination section, it shouldn't say that if the grant terminates that, that they call us the department in here, the department would have the right to terminate the agreement. It just seems to me if the grant ends, we should have the right to say we're done.
We do have, you know, there is a section under eight, I believe. The agreement may be terminated by either party for cause based upon the occurrence of any of the following.
Right. But it didn't include termination of the grant. I just think we should have that.
Yeah.
Added in there.
I wondered about something like that whenever I was reading through it too, if we shouldn't have something.
The, the concern I've got, and, and I, I think this is fine, but I'm interested in, in Dan's opinion and the sheriff's opinion. All of the liability issues that can come up under this program. And if we look at the worst case scenario, there will be an incident where our law enforcement officers are called out and somebody's a potential suicide and we'll go through this process and they'll be evaluated by somebody and that person says, nope, they're fine. You guys can go home and we don't do a mental health commitment. And then after everybody's gone, that person commits suicide and everybody's going to get sued. That's how this is going to work.
Right. And the, the discretion, uh, comes up to where, and we, we do something similar now. If, uh, if we go out to a house and person's not doing well, uh, and we want them to see a counselor, uh, most times we get that person into our vehicle, bring them back to the sheriff's office, have, have a counselor come over and talk to them. And they determine at that point if we need to continue to do an IVC or do they set up a safety plan. So at that point, a, the committal paper that, you know, you and I are very familiar with is not started yet. Uh, if that counselor would think, no, we definitely need to start a, start a committal process, then they would most likely fill out that petition and then we would get up to the hospital and continue on with things.
That's not the part that I'm concerned about.
Well, right. But this, this is stepping in place of that counselor. So if they decide, no, you need to begin an IVC process, then we would take that person to, to the hospital. Where, I think if I'm understanding where your concern is, we, we could probably have that concern anyways. Even if we brought the person into the sheriff's office, counselor said, no, they're okay. We're going to set a safety plan up. We take them back home and then something still happens. I think you could have that scenario in either, either type of event.
Leanne, I can read.
At the scene.
What my concern is, okay? And I, I understand all that. What my concern is, is that right now, we don't have this kind of contract. We don't have this type of indemnification and we don't have this type of insurance. The insurance is a big deal thing. When we buy insurance, then we, um, give up our sovereign immunity on some issues and I'm not sure that we've got a good enough understanding and that'll come from maybe our insurance people, but that's the question. Based on this agreement, what, the way we have it set up right now, if somebody commits suicide, we still have sovereign immunity. The, the county does, to the extent allowed by South Dakota law. I think we might be giving up some of that in this agreement because of the insurance provisions and I just want to be sure that we have a good understanding of what we did with that.
And I believe Mini Haha has already been piloting, correct? For a little while? I believe with Avera?
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of. They have their mobile crisis unit. But these are questions that we have talked about. And they assure us that it's, it's that, that.
Who they?
We still have that same immunity and stuff.
Who they?
That you're talking about, the, um, um, Supreme Court Justice?
Okay.
And, and that group?
And somebody's looking at that.
But that's still something that we can probably work with.
Yeah.
And to make sure that's clear is, is that when they do a safety plan at the scene, it's the, as Bart talked about, it's going to be the same scenario as at the sheriff's office, except it's at the scene, you know? So I mean, those, that was where my first questions when we went into this is that what happens when, if we let somebody stay in their home and, and something?
Well, yeah, and I, I agree with Bart because that's happening right now. There are times when law enforcement, whether it's the sheriff's office or PD is responding to a mental health crisis and that officer at the scene is making a discretionary call as to whether or not to do a mental health hold. And so that's, that's happening. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that's already happening on a daily basis with our law enforcement is they're making discretionary calls on whether or not to do a mental health hold. We only find out about it because the officer decides to do a mental health hold and petition, and, and, uh, start the process of doing an IVC. So, um, I agree with you. I think we can probably, you know, strongly outline some of that in this agreement. I was going to wait until our insurance people saw it. They reviewed it. They put in any additions or corrections and then we take a, a stronger look at it. Uh, but I forwarded it right away after Stacy sent it to me and, uh, we'll try to get that back this week and then go from there. So.
And Dan, just to follow up with your, uh, your comment on the discretionary, when we're making those, those determinations, uh, we're still getting cleared by a counselor. So it's not, it's not the officers who are making the final decision. Well, we'll set a safety plan up with you. We're still getting Brookings Behavioral Health to set that safety plan up. We don't set those safety plans up on our own.
And again, none of, none of those are the issues. The, the issue that the contract does is the county as a governmental entity has sovereign immunity, except for those things where we choose to waive our immunity. This agreement waives our sovereign immunity to the extent of $5 million, if I'm reading it right. And that's the question for our insurance carrier. What do they see how the impact that this agreement has on our sovereign immunity? And it's, I mean, it doesn't matter how we're doing it. That, that's not, the, the overlying question is, do we have all that covered so we've got our ducks in a row? I don't know that.
That's a good point because I, we don't want something to go sideways and then we're stuck.
And I don't have a problem with this. See, this was originally was going to be after the first of the year. All of a sudden they've kind of speeded this up on us. Well, I'm still not clear of the role of the central behavioral health or I can't think of their new name.
Brookings Behavioral.
Brookings Behavioral. See, so I, we're still, you know, when do we refer to them? And, and so there's still some, there's still some procedural things that, that we need to clear it up too. So I don't have a problem with the, the delay. If that makes.
Brookings Behavioral Health, Angie could probably address this, but I think they're tied into this E telecare already, aren't they?
To an extent, they're aware of it and understand how the process works, but it's, it's a substitutionary type situation. So they either go through telehealth or Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness in most cases.
And the talk is right now is that if, if we did use Avera E Care out at the scene, uh, they would follow up with, uh, Brookings Behavioral and let them know, hey, this is what we did on this call. Then Avera, or Brookings Behavioral is aware that we used Avera E Care for a call and this is what happened.
All right. So really the action before us today is your recommendation to table this. Uh, normally a table is till the next meeting, which is December 2nd. It sounds like we've got a lot of things to figure out here. Maybe we table it till December 10th and then we bring that back off the table at that time and decide whether it's ready or not. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move to, oh.
You have to select a date, select a date. I, I did, I can make a motion, I guess.
The 10th.
10th.
Second.
Second. Okay. We'll table till the 10th. So at that time, if you're ready, we'll take action or if you're not, we'll table again.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I did want a roll call on that rather than a voice vote, so thank you. All right. Action F is an action to approve the renewal of the following liquor licenses effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. Now, we're, I think we'll take these all as one action, one motion. Okay. Is there a motion to approve all of these?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on any of the licenses in particular?
Um, so yeah, so these are the businesses who would like to renew their liquor license for another year. Um, all of the locations passed the alcohol sting and so we don't require a public hearing for those that have passed it. We only hold a public hearing if they have had a violation. Um, so Brookings County currently has seven liquor licenses available. Um, you can see that only six of them have applied right now for it. Um, I have been in contact with one of the board members from Meadow Creek in Valga. Um, so they've missed the dead, this deadline, like our deadline that we kind of create in our office. Um, but they still have time to apply if they want to. So we'll keep that. Yeah. So you may see that on a future agenda.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. All right. Got to flip my page here. ING is an action to approve Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board one year appointments. We have a, uh, let's say a 4H leader, extension board member, Andy Dupre. We have 4H Shooting Sports Board Member Terry Went and OAC Pistol Range Volunteer Arden Siegel and also Community at Large Member Timothy Reed. Also no application for the archery range volunteer at this time by the deadline. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second.[1651.86] And any comments? I assume that the O A C one, we will re-advertise?
Yes, we would re-advertise the archery range volunteer position.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Well, it's, again, it's kind of narrow. So Kristen, if you could reach out to the archery range committee there and see if they could pick one of their members to come in here, because this is kind of meant to be from that group, a member on the board. So it's obviously open to the public, but it's open to anybody who wants to register, but it is kind of narrow where we're at, and so if you could reach out to that group and see if there's somebody that's willing to serve.
Right, the archery range committee has started looking at whether their position within the facility is still needed at this point in time. Everything has gone so smoothly and the additions are made, is it necessary to still have a committee? And so that's something that they, there is a plan to bring to the BCOIC Advisory Board here shortly.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. And you'll get back to us, Kristen, and I'll get back to Ryan and Larry on that. Item H is a discussion of possible action on a public comments policy for Brookings County Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move for discussion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second for discussion.
So, again, from my staff report, you can see that this, this public comments now, it's noted in statute that you have to have this public comments portion on each of, each agenda, and we do that in the form of that citizen invitation. This policy is very similar to a policy that Lake County just recently adopted. We haven't had any issues with this agenda item in the past, but I know there has been some, just some concerns in other counties recently, and I thought this would be a really good idea to have a policy for Brookings County on what it, what that might look like if in the future we have a number of citizens that come in and want to make comments outside of an agenda item. So there, you'll see that there are some blanks. I left the effective date blank, because I don't, didn't know if you would be ready to approve it today. Limited time, you know, limit the time for speaking to however many minutes. I guess I was going to leave that up to the board for you to discuss. I think Lake County had three minutes in their policy, but I didn't know what length that looked like for you, for this board, if you were interested in changing that at all. So it's really possible action today, but more of a discussion item. If you're ready to approve it, great, with some of the changes, but I guess I would leave it to your discussion.
Any discussion? I guess I like the three minutes, as far as that's concerned. The difficult part of this in particular is getting those people to sign up on a form in the back that they want to make comments. I've seen that done at several meetings where they have to sign in, and I think it's appropriate. It just gives us the information on whoever's coming up, because normally the sign-in requests their name and their email address, phone number, and things that we can use to get back to them if we need to. If we want to do that, they obviously have to get here early to sign in before they can make comments, because we do it right at the beginning of the meeting. The rest of this is just general information for those people. As our policy, that would also, I think, have to be back there for once they sign in, they can read this and say, okay, alright, I understand, whatever. Because sometimes they just show up and want to opine. This does give us some sort of control from the chair anyways, how we act and what we would expect.
We would anticipate that this policy would apply to our boards and committees?
Yes.
And where I see that this would have some significance is planning and zoning, because planning and zoning actually has people show up in meetings. Not every time, but they, people do come, I don't know, at BCOIC, do you ever get members of the public to make comments? Okay, but at planning and zoning, this does happen. One of the things I thought when I read it, and I was fine with it, except for in number four, I think we need to clarify that no action may be taken on the public body, by the public body, on any item, it should say, on any item that's not on the current agenda regarding comments during the same meeting. We need to make it clear, if it's on the agenda, we'll vote, but if it's not on the agenda, we don't take any action. That just wasn't clear there. It kind of sounded like if we had public comments, then we couldn't vote.
Well, if they have public comments on anything, it's on the agenda item, we defer their comments to the agenda item.
And I do get that, I see that, but we, I don't think it would be clear just to anybody reading how we had that written.
Okay.
The rest of it's fine.
And, yeah.
And then we would anticipate that we would send that out, like, to our boards and?
Yes.
And they would have an opportunity to look at it? Do you think we need to fill in the number of minutes, or is that up to the board?
That's, I don't know. Would you have an opinion on that, Richard, since I think that's probably the board that this will affect?
Just in the history since I've been here, in our public hearings, we've had on different things on the zoning board, planning and zoning commission, we limit our comments during the public hearings to five minutes, and 95% of the people are done talking within that five minutes.
But that, but that's for a certain agenda item, correct?
Right, but any, even if, even if there's, they want to speak on something else, we limit them to five minutes, and that's none.
And you do that at the beginning of the meeting?
Correct.
If it's not an agenda item?
Yep.
Like, that's the important part for all the other boards, is to know it's at the beginning of the meeting, public comments. This is now required by state law, isn't it?
Yes, to have this public comment portion on the agenda, yes.
I would suggest that we stay consistent with either our county commission meeting and all public meetings, that it's either three, or five, or 10, that way we're not going, well, I can only do a county commission for three minutes, but I can go to zoning and do five, I think that'd be confusing.
Three minutes might not be long enough if you're going to have them come up and they have to say their name, and maybe you got to ask them how to spell it, and, you know, by the time you get that, your half, half their time's gone, but.
I guess my one other suggestion following the discussion would be for number, item number one, anyone wishing to make a public comment must sign in prior to the comments portion, I would say prior to the start of the meeting, because this is at one of the first items on each of the agendas. That way, we can collect that information from the back of the room, and I can give that, if it were me, give that to the chair, so he would have that information prior to the start of the meeting.
So then, would we be amending how we do our agenda item number three and sharing with our boards and committees to say, if you want to make a, if you want to accept the invitation, we wouldn't say it like that, but you have to sign in on the sheet before the meeting starts. I think we can have them signing on the sheet when they come up, but maybe, maybe that's, if you've got a heated topic where you've got 30 people, you don't want it done that way.
Correct, right.
So that's why we do it before the meeting. But we'd have to put it that way then, on our agenda, so otherwise people.
I think we would put, like, a note where it says, action items will be scheduled for a future meeting date. I think we would add some additional instruction on that, on our agendas, to say, if you wish to speak during this portion of the meeting, you must be here to sign in prior to 8:30, or, you know, some, something to that effect. So people are aware that they, that they need to be here and sign in prior to.
But if it's something they, they want action on, we can't act on it that day, correct?
Correct, no, if it's not on the agenda for action, no. And then, I think it speaks to that, that, you know, it may be placed on a future agenda if the board feels strongly about it. At that point, it would be placed on a future agenda for action.
I think we want to clarify that the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, for number one in particular, you can't make people sit here from 8:30 until 9:30 scheduled agenda item because they want to make a comment at a 9:30 agenda item. So we, I want, I think we want to clarify whether it's a scheduled agenda item versus the initial public comment.
And at number five speaks to that. Comments related to topics that are on the current agenda must be made during the time for discussion allowed for that agenda item. That is number five.
But the sign-in, number one, doesn't clarify that.
Okay, if we, if we say, if you are here for the public comments portion of the agenda, essentially.
Right.
Do people have to sign in if they want to speak in the, in the, in an agenda item?
We do not require that at this time, no.
Now, then the second question I got, since we haven't had a whole lot of that, since I've been chair, is the chair, are we going to allow questions on the comment? How are we going to put it on a future agenda item? In other words, I might think that we should take his comments, but I want some clarification on what action he actually wants us to take, and then put it, make a motion, put it on a future agenda item. Are we going to have a discussion back and forth with whoever makes a public comment in three to five minutes?
They're not required, it just says the last six there, it says, public, intended public receive comments, it says, members of the public don't have to respond, answer any question or engage.
Right.
Could just, if they have questions for us and nobody wants to respond, we just say thank you, you know, I guess.
So we will have that dialogue available with those people?
I would say so, if they ask a question.
It's up to the discretion of the board, at that, at that time, if they want to engage.
Or discretion of the chair.
The other, the other thing that maybe should be in the policy is, okay, so I come in and I want to make a comment on something that's not on the agenda, does that get put on the bottom of the agenda, or does that get put, where does that show up on the agenda?
It happens during, right then, at that time.
So anybody, you would take those public comments at that time?
At that time, right at the start of the meeting, during that agenda item, because that's when it's noted. Okay.
So you would make a motion to add that discussion item on a future agenda?
Yeah, but there's really no motions or anything, because we can't action. It's up to the chair what goes on to that next time, and so basically, it'd be like, okay, there's a request, and we'll.
We'll handle your request and notify you if we're going to put it on an agenda. But we want a consensus before we put it on agenda.
Not, you don't have to do it right here. I mean, you don't have to have any of that type of stuff here, it's just, we got comments, thank you for your comments, and if the chair decides they want to put it on the next thing, they can. You know, I guess it is not, unless they want to make a promise that they do, I guess that'd be up to the chair.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify how you want to handle it. I don't care how you handle it. If you want to make the chair responsible, that's fine, if you want to vote on whether you take it up on another.
You can't vote, but if, if the chair wants to place it on a future agenda, the chair has that discretion. If another board member feels strongly enough that they feel like it should be placed on a future agenda, then they request that through the chair.
Okay, I like that.
And I don't think we've ever had a situation where another commissioner has said, I would like this on a future agenda, and the chair says, no.
Well, you know, my concern is, we don't want to get into a discussion on the particular subject they're here for, simply because the opposition hasn't been notified that they have an opportunity to speak, because they did it. So you have to be somewhat careful that you don't present an entire position, and we agree or disagree with the position. They just say, we'll put it on agenda or not, so we just, we, because the other side isn't here.
I guess the only thing I'm concerned about is the signing in prior. Does that not allow you, then you are not allowed to speak? I know in other bodies, that if somebody was here, wasn't planning to speak, and then now wants to, they can come up and speak and then sign in afterwards, and just at the requirement of, have you signed in? No, I haven't, okay, after you're done, please sign in before you go.
Speak on what topic, though? Something that's on the agenda?
No, no, just, no, that's not, just, again, we're just talking about what we're talking about here, nothing on the agenda, so they don't have to sign in for the agenda. But if somebody's here prior to, say there's a group here, and there's somebody that wants to make a comment, a public, and they make their comments, and then another person that was here listening wants to speak, does that mean they can't because they didn't sign in by 8:30?
That's what it means.
That's what it means.
Okay. Because I know in other bodies, that if they decide to speak, they want to, they can sign in after the fact, they just have to sign in sometime before or after. I know the legislature's that way. They have a thing at the front, you can come in, you got to sign, and if you decide you want to sign, then you need to go in and say, they tell you, after you've, after you've given your testimony, you can sign, so.
But that's not a specific, if it gets agenda item in a legislature.
You're right, that is true.
That's, that's the difference, that's not a specific item.
Yep, that is true, yep.
And this is speaking to just that public comments portion, where it would not be, I mean, would you allow someone to come in right now and say they want to talk to the board about an item not listed on the agenda?
No.
No. So, we do, that's why we have that right away at the beginning of the meeting, so that people are, know that they need to be here prior.
Do you want to refine this a little bit before we take action on it? Are you interested in?
I mean, that's fine, we're just running into problems, we can change it.
Everybody like it the way it is, and so they want to take action on it the way it is, read, wordsmith it.
So, the first, just to kind of note the changes that I had, it would be anyone wishing to make a public comment, this is number one, must sign in prior to the start of the meeting, and if you wish to speak, if you wish to speak during the public comments portion, or the citizen invitation portion, to clarify that. It would be five minutes in number two, and then in number four, no action may be taken by the public body on any item not on the current agenda during the same meeting, and wish the comments are made. Those are the changes that I had noted.
Is there a motion? Do they want to make a motion to approve it?
There is a motion on the table, I do believe.
We did? Oh, yeah, well, we did, possible action.
He decides.
For discussion purposes.
The motion was for discussion, so I'd like a motion.
Did, did you put a time period in there? I didn't hear that.
Five minutes.
Five minutes? I would move to approve that with, as Stacy read it.
Okay, is there a second?
We have a motion on the table already.
Well, it was for discussion purposes.
You didn't call.
Because we didn't have it, alright. Let's make that amendment to the discussion motion.
Yes.
That amendment to the discussion motion, and a second to the amendment, we'll vote on the amendment, we'll do a roll call.
Who so, who seconded the amendment?
The original?
No.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
And that was for five minutes, correct?
Alright.
I was thinking it was your.
Plus your agenda, plus your agenda.
Yeah.
Plus my changes, all of my changes.
Alright, so your discussion, I motion to amend, as amended. I'm not going to read you, have you read that back. Well, we'll call the roll though.
Pierce?
Yes.
Porzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, we'll vote on the main motion as amended, to include the five minutes and the wordsmithing that Stacy did. Any other comments on that? I think, again, it's important that we have a policy that we can relate to, and I think that policy needs to be posted at the back of the room before every meeting, so people have a chance to read it, because they're not going to probably get that information otherwise. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Porzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Main motion, as amended, carried.
Thank you. Itemized in action to declare items as surplus property to be destroyed, transferred to another entity, or donated, and we have a document, is there a motion to approve?
Some move?
Motion made in second, and any comments on the surplus property?
Yes, yeah, as you can see in my staff report, you can see the items that we would like to destroy. Most of them are just expired items, so, and the VCR and DVD don't work. And then you can see the items that we would like to transfer to another entity. I don't know which entities Bob is wanting to transfer those to, but he has an idea of who, who, who could use them. And then you can also see the 18 cert hard hats. I've reached out to the children's museum to see if maybe they would have any interest in, in taking a few of those, and they did, so, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to the Commission Department Director's report.
So the first information I have, Vicki presented during, is part of the Finance Officers' Report, the surplus cash analysis information for October month end. You can see we had a big jump due to second half tax, taxes that were due in October, so we're just shy of 46%, and that is right at the nine, nine-year average for the county, so we're in good shape. And then as we move forward, Vicki and I will be looking at, kind of keeping track of that, that general fund surplus, to see if there's any designations that may need to be made at year-end to get us down to where we typically like to be at year-end, about that 25%. So we'll, it's, it's a little bit early yet to be looking at that, we start looking at that probably, you know, once we get into December a little ways. We did get the letters sent out to the townships regarding the 25% FEMA match grant that the commission approved last, last meeting. I did hand out kind of an updated, some updated information. There was the list of the townships, the 25% grant amount that the county was going to give, and you can, if there's a date in the submitted column, that means that we have received their information back. We've just basically required them to send something, sign, one of the supervisors to sign it, say, yes, we would like these dollars, and to send that, that back to us. And Trenton Townships, I think you approved the check today, that went out last, or two weeks ago when they were here, and so far, we've received four of those letters back. It's kind of a part of that, you can see in my notes on my staff report, that Scott Birkey with Oslo Township, and then I heard from Argo Township as well, that these numbers, when we received these numbers two weeks ago, I didn't realize at the time that they were preliminary numbers, and that townships were, still had time to submit some damage assessment information, and so we've been contacted by a couple of townships. Oslo, for instance, although I think he, he mentioned it right away this morning, they I think he, he mentioned it right away this morning, they were eligible for, I think they submitted initially just over 6,000, so about 1,500 was there, 25%. And now really that amount is, is over 15,000 is what they ended up. So I guess my recommendation at this time is to see when that's all done and final and the, the numbers are in, we can maybe look at that and see how much change there was. And if there's some, maybe some funds that we may have available, I don't know what that looks like yet. December 10th meeting, we will be doing a supplemental budget hearing to add some dollars into this to help cover the costs that were approved two weeks ago. So I think we just kind of hold off for now, and I think we can continue to get that information. I'll, I'll bring that to you moving forward. The town, and I did provide this morning to the township information on kind of the culvert grants and now kind of where we're at. So be crunching numbers continuously as we move forward through this process. Included with my report was the information on the upcoming US 14, US 14 bypass corridor study meetings, November 25th and 26th. The Tuesday, or, excuse me, Monday, the 25th, that meeting is here at 5:30 PM in this room. And then Tuesday, the 26th, it's at same time, but it's over at Valley Fiber Comms Conference Room over in Volga. In visiting with Steve Graham with DOT, he did say that the information they'll be presenting at those meetings, both are, they'll be presenting the same information, however, the conversation, depending on the audience and the questions, may go in different directions for those meetings. And I think Sheriff Marty is not here, but he, he is intending to go to the Tuesday meeting in Volga because, because he has some concerns about things more over, more over there. So tomorrow and Thursday, I will be out of the office. HR specialist Laura Littlecott and I will be heading to Mitchell tomorrow morning to attend the Safety and Loss Conference. This is a meeting that's mandatory attendance in order to get our gold status that we get at Fall Convention. We're rewarded those, with the Safety and Loss plaques and get listed in the brochure. And to get that gold status, we have to attend this meeting. And it does have several breakout sessions, so that's why there's the two of us that go to that to, to cover additional breakout sessions that are offered. So it's just a couple days down in Mitchell this week. Included with my staff report was the invitation for the mayor's celebration on Thursday, December 5th, coming up. Scott Amundson with the, the South Dakota Governor's Office of Economic Development has asked if the commission is interested in having him come and present information on the livestock tax rebate incentive program. And I, Richard, I think, I think you are maybe familiar with that. It was discussed at a Tenth County meeting when that program initially came up. But he, he just said, "If the board is interested, if you want, if you feel like you know what is going on with that," he doesn't need to come, but he offered to come to, to discuss that program if you are interested. Is there any interest in that? Or not?
You know, Tenth County had that conversation, First District had that conversation at a couple of its meetings also. And Todd Case had some real questions about the implementation of that program, the fairness of it, all the way around. And his comment was, he wasn't in favor of the program. If you want to look at it individually, we certainly can have these people come and make their pitch. But it's a, a program that encourages a tax rebate on CFOs. And Richard probably has more of the specifics on it, but I don't know that we would approve or disapprove. If you're not interested, we'll, I'd have him come make a presentation. We can ask for information from Richard and, and Bob, or we can have him come and make a presentation. So. Apparently no interest in the presentation.
Okay. 2020 is right around the corner. And if you recall during budget time, the commission agreed to transfer the traverse to the sheriff's department to use as a transport vehicle, which left, left me with the task of finding a new commission vehicle. In my, in my report, I've included several options that fall within our budget, a Jeep Grand Cherokee, a Dodge Durango, and a Chevy, Chevrolet Equinox. I guess if anyone feels real strongly about any one particular vehicle, I can look into that. Otherwise, if you just want me to go ahead and move forward with what I think is best, I'll work with, probably Brian and Marty to get something ordered.
What year vehicle are we looking at?
New.
New.
So is it a 19 or a 20?
I think it, these are 19.
It's a 20.
20.
Their 20s.
Yeah.
The Durango is the only one that will seat seven, right? Everything else is five with three in the backseat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was kind, that was kind of honestly the way I was leading, just because it had the additional seating capacity for people. Not that we ever have a, a huge need to go much more than five, but if it's, if we need it, it's there. And then for, you know, when you, if you're traveling, you'll have suitcases or bags and whatnot. So just the added space would be nice.
And if you're taking one of the other two where you have five, if all the commission, for example, went, and we were driving a long distance, three in the back is crowded. But that's, I, I thought the Durango was the better choice. It doesn't get as good a gas mileage, but it has the extra space.
Yep. Yes, agree. Agree.
Start researching that one, I guess.
Yep. Just a couple things, just to add quick. I think Commissioner Pierce and I had a brief discussion. I said I would bring it up as part of my staff report about when we have board appointments that aren't, when no one applies for them, and how to handle that. I don't know, usually we just keep advertising and we try to reach, if, if somebody knows of someone, we try to, just by word of mouth, get that. I don't think there's ever been a situation where we've just appointed someone to one of those volunteer boards because of, due to lack of an applicant. I think we just keep searching until we get someone. But, I mean, is there, does there come a point after advertising X many of times that you would want to appoint? But then my thought is, if you're going to appoint someone, that person would have to agree to, to do it. You're not going to appoint someone who wouldn't, doesn't want to do the job. So then have them fill out the application form. But, but what are your, I know.
Did those two positions, do we have applicants for the two positions that we've re-advertised?
We, there were three positions. There was an extension board position, the human rights, and the housing. And we do have two of the three that have applicants at this time.
And we filled the extension one today?
No.
No, that wasn't OAC.
That was always C.
That was OAC, okay.
Yeah. We did all the, we have one OAC that will need to re-advertise and, and, but for, was it a couple of weeks ago that we had made the appointments and there were the three? And we actually had applications, but they had come in after our, our deadline. And so we do have applications for two of the three positions.
Like, one way to look at it is, obviously, you want people who want to serve, so you can't appoint somebody without their knowledge. If we have applicants that come after the deadline and we have two of them, we could probably make an appointment from the two, even though they're past the deadline. Would that be what you're looking at doing?
That would help. Where, you know, in the past, particularly these two that we advertised and re-advertised, at one time, we had those open. I reached out to somebody and they indicated an interest and they did the application. And then what happened is the person that was in the position, once they saw nobody applied, they reapplied. And we kind of take the position, I don't necessarily agree with this, but the commission's taken the position that if somebody's on a board and they reapply, unless they're doing a bad job, we just automatically kind of reappoint them. And then people that were interested, because we talked about the position, or I talked about the position, then they were told, "No." I, I, it's a hurtful way to do business when we have a really hard time getting applicants for our openings. And I just think whether or not somebody has to apply, if we go through the whole publication process, nobody applies. And if the commission knows somebody that's interested in doing the job and that would do a good job, we could just appoint them. I don't think we have to re-go through the whole process again. I think somebody could make, one of the commission could make a motion and the rest of you could say yea or nay.
I think you'd be looking more at a policy that states that if a position
Exactly.
Has no applicants by the deadline, any applicant would be considered after the deadline.
Right.
But it still has to be an application.
That, that'd be fine. But I like that. I mean, that we don't have to re-notice it and do everything again. I, it's our policy. We get to decide on it. Why, why are we, we're going to advertise that one opening now for the third time? Is that what I just heard? It's, whichever one isn't filled yet.
I don't think it's closed yet. So we're still, we're still waiting.
Maybe after the
Second time.
Second time, we, we
Right.
Any applicant will consider.
Run it, run it one time, don't get any applicants. Run it a second time, we don't get any applicants. Then, first come, first served, basically.
We'll take any applicant.
Well, we could recruit. I, I just think at some point, we should be able to recruit.
All right. So then you're talking about a policy.
Yes.
All right. It's our motion to amend our policy.
Can't, can't have a motion.
Oh, we can't do that today. That's right. All right. So, all right. Stacy, you got to work it off. We got to make a policy amendment for us to.
I don't think that's been a, I don't think we've had a policy on that anyway, just sort of how we've done things. So I'll come up with something for us to do.
Until somebody calls us out on it, we're okay. But I think a policy.
And I think our policy has just been to continually to re-advertise until we get an applicant. So.
That is where I think we need to change the policy, if that's what you're requesting.
Exactly.
All right.
I'll, I'll draft something for.
We'll put it on a future agenda.
Something to add to that, at one time, did we have more than one year length on some of these boards and changed it to one year? I mean, we have like, just like commission, two-year, three-year terms. That was asked on a couple of the, um, extension board members that.
The extension board is spelled out in statute. That's January 9th through January, or January 10th through January 9th. That's spelled out in statute. That's one-year terms for the extension board.
But we set that, right?
State statute sets that. So length of terms, it's, it's set by basically the board or the committee, if they have bylaws that say, this is the length of the term, that's what we go off of. And I think most do. The thing that we changed recently was the timing of the appointment. Because they had, we researched whether, you know, it mattered if they were appointed in April or May, and some were the end of the year, January 1. And it was sort of all over the place. And they were getting missed because they had different appointment times for different boards throughout the year. And so we've been streamlining that to get everything on a January 1, unless, like, extension board statute says the appointment runs one year, January 10th through January 9th. We were trying to get it all onto that January start, just to clean it up and so that we're doing these appointments, well, hopefully, if you get applicants, one time a year. But doing it in the fall of the year.
All right. Any other discussion?
A couple other things. You, you may, if you listen to the radio station, be hearing my voice. We're doing some ads for being closed the Friday after Thanksgiving. That happens to be the last business day of the month of November. So we're trying to get the word out now for folks to come in that, by that Wednesday prior. So we're trying to get that word out. We've done some ads on our website and social media already. And then we've kind of boosted that post again this week. So we're trying, trying to get the word out that way. And we've sent some ads to the different papers throughout the county as well. Just trying to spread that word. Otherwise, it's just your upcoming dates. Tomorrow is the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting in Huron, and I have three of you going. You, Larry and Ryan, I believe. Well, I've already RSVP'd for you, so. I talked about the core bypass US 14 and US 14 bypass study meetings coming up. We're closed Thanksgiving Day and the Friday after. Monday, December 2nd, I mentioned earlier in the meeting that we will have that special commission meeting for executive session to review construction manager at risk RFPs at 1:30. That's 1:30 that Monday afternoon, December 2nd. Ag appreciation banquet is 5 o'clock at SwifteL Center on December 3rd. The county does have a table, and I think there is still one spot. I know Misty, Mike Left, Kristen have all indicated that they plan to go. And then four of the commissioners are sitting at that table. So we still have one available spot at that table. So I'll continue to work on that. The mayor's holiday celebration, which I had mentioned, had the invite in my report, December 5th. And then looking out a ways, Brookings SDSU Day at the Capitol, January 15th. I am finished.
Thank you. State's attorneys report.
Yeah, just wanted to briefly highlight the letter that we received from the governor's office, talking with us about, so when they passed juvenile justice reform, Senate Bill 73, a few years back now, they were incentivizing counties to refer juveniles to court-approved diversion programs. And so we have our teen court that's run through the Boys and Girls Club. So we refer low-level misdemeanor offenses and child in need of supervision cases, most commonly truancy, to the Boys and Girls Club, where they then go and complete the teen court. So for every juvenile that's referred, the county receives approximately $154.90 if they successfully complete. So based on our numbers reported to the governor's office for fiscal year 19, we had approximately 28, 29 successful juveniles that participated in teen court. And then we were compensated, Brookings County, for the $4,027.40. So that's a cost savings to the county, holding juveniles accountable and working with the Boys and Girls Club jointly to do this. I had sent this letter over to the executive director over at the Boys and Girls Club, just crediting him for partnering with the county for teen court. And so this is a, you know, this is a credit to them, but also our partnership. Because I know the county, obviously, refers a lot of funds to the Boys and Girls Club. And so this is kind of a kickback to that. So Vicki, I got the check here. So just wanted to highlight that among all the other things going on in the office. So.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes. Did we fund, I can't remember the dollar amount we ended up with in the budget for next year for Boys and Girls Club. Was it 25,000 or 20,000?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-five? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to item 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. We do have some correspondence received, listed there. And with that, we'll start with Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Pierce.
On November 7th, I attended the Public Affairs Meeting. That meeting focused on housing issues. And we had quite a, a long discussion about that. Went out to the BCOAC on November 9th for the pumpkin chuck. But for some reason, I had it in my calendar at 11. It was at 1 o'clock. So I missed that. But the building really looked nice. It'd been a while since I'd been in there, and it, it really did look good for that event. Attended the 4-H recognition night on November 12th. On November 14th, we had joint powers. And at that meeting, we decided, and, and Mike and Stacy can tell me if I've got this wrong, I think we made a decision to put two electric meters in, in the parking lot that'll be
Yes.
On the other side of the swale.
Yes, it'll be on the west side of the bioswale in the lot that's always, there's been some parking, just across the alley there for some time. It's been there since the building was built. And just some, yeah. And there's going to be, we're gonna, potentially, if it's, if it works out with ADA, to put the car, electric car charging stations, if one at that north end and then one the south end, I believe, right?
Mm-hmm. Exactly. We, we went back and forth and more there were going to be, and I couldn't remember what we decided.
I think what we decided is to put the one in, and the second one would be, depending on demand.
So that, that'll be forthcoming. And then we talked about the arts. You maybe saw the article in the paper. I don't know if you wanted to add anything about that, Stacy. You're working more on art in the building.
Say that again? I'm sorry.
There was an article in the paper about art in the building that.
Oh, yes. Yeah. We've been going to the Arts Council. The Brookings Arts Council has been working. They've actually, they just put out last week a call for artists to submit work. And right now, we're just concentrating on the one location on first floor. It's actually kind of across from the finance office. It's a, kind of a big empty wall. It's the kind of the back wall to the city engineering, city development office. That's what we're looking at initially with maybe plans to see how that goes, to maybe do some more in the future. But that call is out. It's posted. And then that group, that Arts Council group, I'm a part of. And then that group, that Arts Council group, I'm a part of that, City Council Member Leah Brink is a part of that through the Joint Powers Board as well. We meet at the end of January to review the submissions, so.
And then the last thing of significance that happened during that meeting, Sean talked to us, and there's going to be some recabling in this room and in the, the executive room?
Yes, so we have, and Sean, back behind the magic curtain, can come out and add some more things too, but doing a significant, just some upgrade to this room and the exec session room is a budgeted project that we had for just technology upgrades for the building, working jointly with the city on that. I won't get into all of exactly why things aren't working, I, but just know that we're going to be making some upgrades here before the end of the year, so.
And hopefully take care of some of the, the audio problems that we have, so.
Yeah, yeah. We're looking at maybe adding a second mic to the speakers table. We've tried, we tried an omnidirectional mic a couple of months ago now, and it picked up, it, it, it just, yeah, it picked up everything, and there was a lot of feedback, and it just didn't work, so we're looking at maybe just adding another mic similar to what we have here.
And you'll be some, seeing some changes, these aren't going to all be on a daisy chain, or will be on a daisy chain, I forget which way it's going to go.
Yeah, they're, right now, your screens up here are, everything is through SVSI boxes, inputs, outputs, are all essentially daisy chained together, so if one goes out, everything down the line goes out. And so it's a process to figure out, okay, where exactly is the issue, and to, and to get it fixed. So that will be eliminated as well, as one of the changes.
Then on November 14th, I attended the pre-proposal meeting at the jail. We had a good turnout. There were eight contractors that, that appeared, and that, and that was very helpful. I did the tour again of the jail, I was like walking through it. I can't wait till we're upgraded. Last night, I attended the Vision Brookings Reception. I did lay at each of your spots this handout that, that they gave out at the meeting last night, and then we had a presentation on Communities of Excellence and where that program is at, and looking forward to next year when we're, they're actually going to start talking about what kinds of things we should be moving on. Right now, this year was dedicated to really profiling our community. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about, and this wasn't so much a meeting, but y'all know that the I-29 interchange at 20th Street, that grant was approved, and that the federal government through the Build Program will be giving a grant for $18.7 million. I sent each of you, or Stacy sent each of you, a copy of the narrative on the grant, because I thought you would be interested in just seeing some of the detail that was involved in that. And one of the things that, if you get a chance to look at, at this narrative, it does tell you that the city committed 2 million, we committed 2 million, and there was private funds, 669,000, something like that, from the East Brookings business people. But on page four of the narrative, and I had just forgotten this, because it'd been done two different ways, it does say that the grant includes roadway extensions on either side of the overpass connecting 22nd Avenue to the west and 34th Avenue to the east, approximately 2,500 feet in each direction from the I-29 right away. So that's, that's pretty exciting. I did have a conversation with Brian, and I'm, I think that it may be, as we're moving forward on what happens next with that project, that we would want Brian to be involved in those meetings and looking out for the county's interest in making sure that those things that are important to us happen. There will be a meeting on November 26th in the afternoon, and I think, Stacy, did we block off one to four in the room next door? That's not 100% confirmed, but I think we're pretty close, where City Council Members will be invited, Commission Members are invited, our Highway Department staff are invited, hopefully Stacy will come, anybody that has an interest can come and hear about the project, what the next step's going to be, and all of that. So that's going to be next door in that room, I believe, on November 22nd, excuse me, 26th, at 1 o'clock. And, and when we get everything tacked down on that, Stacy will send out additional information to everybody. The budget stuff, when you look at this document that I sent out to you, you'll see that what was approved for the connecting arterial streets, that would be 222nd and 234th. The, the preliminary budget had $3,458,000 allocated for those two pieces. So I think we're going to have a real interest in how all that's, that's going to be working. And then at some point, we'll have to start talking about 214th and if we have some plans there or not. Anybody have any questions on that? Oh, it's pretty exciting. Okay, thank you, that's my report.
That's complete your report. Thank you. Commissioner Porzma.
November 12th was also at the 4-H Recognition Night, the 14th also at the jail pre-proposal meeting, and then last night, we had a Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board meeting, and have started planning for our facilities retreat in January in conjunction with the Strategic Planning Retreat that we did a couple of months ago, to look at expanded services, expanded staffing, and then what does that mean for future building projects. And then the other thing I wanted to point out was just a quick handout that I got from one of the civil engineers that I work with in private practice, a fair amount, and then a fact sheet that they provided for informing the Commissioners of various FEMA programs, a pre-disaster mitigation plan, and their hazard mitigation plan in conjunction with other FEMA programs, just in case we weren't aware of all of those different pieces that were part of their grant programs. So that's there for your information as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman.
Nothing this last couple of weeks, so my meetings are next two weeks, so, daylight this week.
Commissioner Johnson.
On November 6th, I attended the Regional Weed Meeting out at the Outdoor Adventure Center. It was attended by 19 different counties, I believe it was, and Misty gave an update, I think there was about 51 people there, and thanked Misty for hosting the regional event. It was well-attended despite the weather. On November 8th, I had intergovernmental meeting along with Commissioner Krogman. Basic topics, discussed some of the positive influence College Game Day had on the community, and some issues affecting enrollment, both in the high school and at the college level. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. On the 6th, District Weed Meeting, thank you again, Misty for hosting that, did a great job. The 12th was a 4-H Recognition Banquet, attended the opening of that. The 13th was a Leader Roundtable, good discussion on future workforce development and housing that they'll continue studying. 14th was the Joint Powers Board, which has already been covered by Commissioner Pierce. And noon on the 14th, the POD discussion and a report on the POD Program up at SDSU and the influenza shots that gave over 1,000 inoculations up there that day. And then, in the, at noon, also the pre-proposal meeting at the jail. And that completes my report. We will move on to Item 14, which is the executive session in accordance with House Code of Codified Law, and Stacy will read all of them for us.
In accordance with SDCL 12521 for personnel, 3 for consulting with legal counsel, 4 contract negotiations, and 6 security.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Second.
Most remain seconded, although there's any discussion, we don't need any, although it's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close day, we move into executive session.